Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a special meeting of the city's Council of the City of Pearsall to be held today Tuesday, July 31st. The time is 7:02 PM. May I have a roll call, please?
Mary Moore.
Present.
Robert Villar.
Present.
Richard Danda. Sonia Hernandez. Brenda Trevino. Julianna Hernandez.
Here.
Ben Bristow.
Here.
Gavin Frazier.
Here.
We have a quorum, so let us stand for the invocation of the Lord Jesus.
Father, we pray. Lord God, we come to you. We just thank you for your mercy and your love. And thank you for all that we have through your son, Jesus. Lord God, God, it's everything we need to do for our city. And I pray to watch care over our council. I pray, Lord, to be over our administrative and the workers out there. Father God, we live in this nation to you. We pray for all of our elected officials. We pray that they seek you and govern with you. Father God, then we pray that it be your will. You send us to marine, that we work, you have sent. But we pray you'd send us to water, you'd be so patient. We pray all these things in Jesus Christ, your son's name. Amen.
United States of America, and to your body, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four, new business. A.
Do you switch A and B, please? Do you switch A and B?
Item B, discuss a possible action to approve L&amp;B Task Order Number Six for professional services associated with the City Hall Annex Building Number One. This is an action item. Need to entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Please.
All in favor?
Madam Mayor, Council, so before you have Task Order Number Six, which would be the architecture of the new City Hall Annex Building, it's across the street. We need to get this approved so that we can get started on getting some design concepts put together so we can have something to look at and decide what we want to do with that process. So this will be the first step.
You say, "Design concepts"?
Yeah, to get some design concepts.
Here you can add.
Yeah. Also, we can decide what we want to do.
Will you refer to this?
No. Task Order Number Six.
Four B. I'm there, David.
Standard Task Order, just like what we do for the City Center, to get started. So we have to have something to start with.
Okay. Any questions from the council?
Can you give just a thumbnail sketch of what this is?
A thumbnail?
Yeah, of the Task Order Number Six.
So basically, we're looking at what we have, and this looks at what we have in that budget from the insurance claim and from what they've revealed above for the depreciation, minus what we've dedicated to the park, minus what we've dedicated, what the cost is for five land. And we're looking at that, what that balance is left, that building, a building somewhere around that balance, so that doesn't cost us any additional money. Just like even the number whatever it was, was left, it's like 1.2, 1.25 million or something like that, that would be left after all the other things that the council approved doing out of insurance. And so, the fees were based on the number I gave of a building to building that size. And so, it would be to start laying out some ground steps so that you guys can look at and make some decisions about what kind of building you want built over there. They would look at designing a building that would fit the lot, that would fit the things that we told them we wanted to be in that building. And then, we'll have some different concepts laid out so you guys can decide what you want to work with. As a reminder, what we talked about in that building, a big, in the center of the building, a big meeting room for holding the city council meetings in, holding any other city functions in, and for the municipal courts and functionalities, we can get them out of the closet, the library. One side, we would have offices for the judge, the municipal court clerks, and their storage area, the storage blocks that they have to keep secure. Different options we're looking at, and putting out, if you guys look at, one would be just having old offices down one side of the rest of the meeting space area. We've opened up a lot of room in there now with purchases out of the building, so we don't have to do storage across the street now, so now it can just be a building. So, we're looking at, if we just did one side with offices, then what does that lead to that meeting space? And what will we do with that meeting space? If there's a lot of room left over, then maybe do another row of offices on the other side where we could have remote office for the PDE. That's one of the things we talked about trying to do in that building as well. Or maybe getting able to put some other city staff members in there in that building as well. We'll have to look and see how sort of things come out based on cost.
The question is, and these are the fees to begin that process of designing the...
That would be the total fee if it was, if the whole building was designed and everything was done. So, if we get toward the way in, and we decide we want a smaller building or want something else, those fees will adjust based on the size of the building. Fees will end up being based on the size of the building.
And that, and it needs to go through L&amp;B because there are engineers in it. It says an architect, but...
We have our... Our team is down originally, those are engineering and architectural services.
Through you, that, y'all are that subsidiary of yours.
Yes, sir. What we'll do, we'll bring you some floor plans before we move forward into a full set of plans, and give you some design concepts and how big we can stretch it out, and give you some ideas, that way you guys are comfortable with as much square footage. We're going to concentrate in the middle room and see how we can, how big we can make it. But once we get an idea of the concept we're going to do, then we can, we can go into the full design, and that's where we'll get a better scope of the, how much of the jobs you're going to buy. Of course, we don't know exactly how much the bid will permit until the bid starts permitting.
That'll be an open bid process.
Well, an open bid process, yeah.
And then, that will determine the bid was for the contractor who committed to it.
Contract, yeah. Well, like, we always do to all our projects, it's a procurement project, process, we'll bid it out, and as bids come in, we look at the low bidders, and then we'll check the references, and then we'll make the recommendations to you guys if you guys want to...
But we'll get to see on the bid.
You'll get to see on the bids, excuse me.
So this is, this is Task Order Number Six, because there's just like the other ones that the council's done. Or Task Order Number One was streets and roads. Task Order Number Two was gas line project. You know, we had a Task Order, I think, Number Four or Five was the one for the civic center. So, this is the way we direct them to do what we want them to do. But all that is, is saying, you know, start on the process, and it doesn't, every time, like with the gas line projects or whatever else, the Task Order was to do the gas line projects, it was put out for bid, once, and once the design was done, it was put out for bid, and then the bids come to you guys, and you guys approve it.
Yes.
And we'll have the next figure immediately. We have actually the next, I think it was Task Order Number Four. That bid just finished, and we'll actually have a bid review on that one. That's the rest of the council.
To give you an example, the bids for the gas, it came in too high. And the first time around, so we came back and we rebid it, and our talks, we made the project smaller, and then now we're going to be ready in a week or two to put it out for recommendations, for you to accept the bid.
The only thing, that just kind, it kind of strikes me, and I don't have a basis for what the save is on, not a basis on, but it looks like, you know, these costs are pretty high as a percentage of our product. If we're looking at 1.2 million, that's whatever that is, 15%.
It's 19%.
Yeah, pretty high. So anyway, this looks like a lot for soft costs.
Well, Robert was trying to explain to Mr. Jackson the lesson, and if you go off of our, our designing, architectural, and civil engineering, on those fees, I think it came out to what, to like 12 or 13%?
Yeah.
12 or 13%? But then, we do the, which is on average, then we do our construction on average to make sure that, you know, I'm out here to make sure that it gets done, and of course, our backup with the, anything that our architects have come out here, all the streets are covered. Awesome. And that's on the, on the construction administration services.
I think before we get into another project, we can finish. Yeah, there's a question from some of them. I'd like to see you come up with your plans. You say you can provide plans once we approve. Can we discuss some of those plans before we look at building? This 19% on fees on this, on this project, that's a little high, and we need to, we need to figure out what we're going to get.
Well, we can't just go out there and work on something, this can go on and on. We'll, we'll have a concept of how much money you're working with, and we'll bring you a couple of concepts, and then you can choose.
So you're going to pay for what you're going to bring, and that's what you're saying?
Well, yeah. I mean, we have to work on it, we have to work on it. For you.
So how did you arrive at these figures at 19% of the debt cost?
That was totally off of, off of our, our scope of work and how we've done every project on the percentages.
So you have an idea of what it's going to look like?
We have more of an idea of what is, what we want it to look like. But like I said, no, we can't, we can't do anything until we send our surveyors out here and make sure that we have enough room to put with what you want, anywhere between 300 to 300 square feet that it's going to fit in here. So, the costs come down, we don't fit, but we need our surveyors to come survey it, too. And that's part of the cost of the policy.
So their fees are calculated based on what I told them we would have for a budget to do it? Well, it's not based on what it's actually going to be. We don't know what the actual cost is going to be, but it's based on, that's standard practice, and say, okay, what's your budget for this? Here's what the fee would be related to that. Because we don't know how many square people it'll be, we don't know any of that, until we actually get a chance to start working on the design and figure it out.
Yes, Bill.
I mean, I do understand the process, and I know this is, this is step one, and I do believe that we can handle multiple things at one time. But, A, we want to see and understand what we're doing, but I guess the only thing that just catches my eye, I mean, if you're basing on, it just seemed like it was really high for soft costs. I mean, it just seemed like a high figure, so really, at the end of the day, we're going to get $9,000 worth of building. Because, and soft costs, I understand soft costs are a complete part, they're part of it.
Well, and soft costs, they're actually the hard, hard costs for us, because we won't exceed this amount, no matter, no matter if that bid comes in low or high, we're the ones that are taking the risk of what's coming in. So if you decide to go for a 1.4 million dollar building, we still do it for the same price. So then, we roll that in, and we're at probably 14%.
Yes, Galen.
The normal, on just the...
Was average.
And civil engineering services, architectural services, and civil, it's anywhere between 12 and 15%. But we have the administrative costs here to come out here and oversee that also. Also, that's another add-on here, which is the, what we did about the construction administrative services. As for the architect, and for myself, and any other engineer that's come out here and take over that, that build, quality of the builds.
Yes, Galen.
My question is, what's, what's the normal cost of 12 to 15 degree, 19 cent? Is there any way to work on that?
Well, you're happy to start in the construction, but you won't have anybody, you know, here daily, like you're used to seeing somebody out here all the time.
I know you're here a lot, but for firms to oversee our projects, our street projects are not, we can have oversight on the project. I'm not saying not at, not at your level, I mean, they're just not oversight like it should. There's a lot longer streets right now. And so, I mean, we need to thoroughly look at this, because we keep getting into projects, and we need to make sure that, in my opinion, make sure that we complete the projects that we're completing and get what we're supposed to get, not what we might get. Some of this stuff is just moving on too quickly.
Well, if I can defend that project, we added our extra work that we're still trying to complete, so when we can't complete a project, we've come to an understanding, I've already met with the contractor and the municipal contractor out here to resolve all the issues that you have on the streets, but they want to do them all when they come in and mobilize again to do the final street. So, and so, we're, and we took, we took into consideration...
Are they going to go back and dig six inches, like you said?
They're going to come back and do every single stretch, and in fact, he said, "I'll do even more to fix them," which is on all the streets and all, and all your...
Yep, stick to the subject.
It's been resolved, and I've already agreed with Mr. Jackson, they're going to come in at the very end of the project, when they do that one, they're going to do everything else.
Can we, is the percentage of 15% negotiable? I mean, 19 down to 15%?
Can, can we work with it?
Yes.
Can we work with, with the administrative cost, which will lessen the business out here? Again, we can work that.
Senator, just, I guess, setting a budget at this side of the equation is like, okay, maybe, I mean, if, we can set the budget to get started, and then we'll just authorize the project, but just, that's some figure, less than this. And I know, in other words, we can always, you know, as it, as it hits that amount, we can look at and increase others in order to get those levels of services. I just, still just think, man, that's a, that's a big number.
Anyway, we can cut back the administrative cost to $30,000, and that brings it to about maybe 60%. 60, 70%. We can do that, and if you need more oversight over here onsite, if, when we get to that point and we're exhausting the 30,000, I will let Mr. Jackson down to bring him, bring him to speed, and let you know, hey, we need more oversight, or we don't need, whatever you guys decide. But as far as taking it out, I wouldn't suggest that, because, you know, especially when you're building, building, then you, then you say, whoa, you know, they left that door, they left this out, they left, you know, the water's not...
What is, what is the timeframe that it would take you to complete this phase of project? In other words, to present to us all the engineering, all the architectural plan?
Probably a couple of months.
And how often will you bring that back?
Okay. Once, once you're breached of this, then I can take it back, and we can work on it and get some kind of a floor, floor plan, which it all, it's all, it's going to be a floor plan. This is what we're thinking, we're going to have, how many rooms, how big the conference room is going to be, and bring it back to you in a couple of weeks. I can try to bring by fortune. But we have to move forward with this, with the Task Order at that rate, and then we decide, you know, if we move forward or not. Because we're, we're estimating between 300 to 370 square feet.
Go ahead.
My question is, how do you calculate the construction, the construction services? Because I work a small business, I leave it out of jobs all the time, communication avenue, there's engineering involved, and I understand the process. That's...
It is based...
High.
It's based on a 12-month average, and on a, on a commercial building, that's what it takes, 12 months. So if you break that down, it's not bad.
What, but 40, you kind of calculate?
They do it by monthly. They got something to build monthly.
So it's not any hours?
Ex, ex amount of hours, you know.
But, but I guess what I'm trying to get to is, what does that mean per hour?
This is what I... That, that's going to be real detailed, I didn't have that. We usually just, when we do things, we'll just give you a breakdown of this, and that's, that's really detailed, as far as every minute hour, whatever it's on there. Sometimes it's...
That's the kind of detail I'm used to working with.
Sometimes it's heavy on the front side, and sometimes it's, or light on the front side, and then heavy on the back side. So, it's broken down evenly across.
I understand that. I just, I like to know what I'm paying for, and like I said, when I'm doing the job I did, with detail, not general.
So, and, and just to, just to let you know, most of the time, when they hit their bills, they know that I've spent a lot more time with what they're getting paid for. So, just FYI, you know, that's, that's something that covers me being here all the time. I, I, that's why I'm jumping from city to city, because that amount of money is not going to cover much of the time, so.
Do you have the authority to bring it to 15%?
To 50%?
You, or you have to talk to Robert?
50%. That's, that's going to be almost all of the administrative fees in it. This project can't be done without getting certain fees.
Well, you said the average was 12 to 15, didn't you say earlier?
On, on the, in the civil engineering department.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I meant.
On the design, architectural design, yeah, that's, that fee is about anywhere between about 50%.
That's...
And then you have this, a construction administrator, which covers me, and when they have to come and make the business out there, any mechanical engineer, electrical engineer, structural engineer, that covers all of that.
I don't have anything else to say, I just want to make a motion to table this item. Table.
Madam Mayor, before you...
Till we get further information.
Before you go any further, I want to ask a question.
Yes, sir.
You're complaining about projects, I mean, finish, I'd like to know what projects you're talking about. I mean, we've heard your complaints about, can I finish, please? We've heard your complaints about the streets. We've completed rebuild the wastewater treatment plant, we've done gas, 70% of gas lines, we've done water and sewer and everywhere, and I've not heard any complaints about those projects. I've only complained about something that happened with the streets and we resolved that. We've done $5 million worth of work, and we're talking about complaints on about $200,000 worth of work. So, I don't understand why there's, why there's this sudden thought that we can't do multiple projects, we've been doing this since I've been, and they've all been done very well. We repaired stuff that was broken for years, and everything that we repaired is working like it's supposed to be. Wastewater treatment plant's working better than it's ever worked, probably since any bid, probably at least 30 years. So, I mean, I kind of take that personally, that you're sitting there saying that, well, there's all these projects going, we're not getting things done right. Yeah, we are getting things done right. And yeah, there was a problem with that, that's why we're going to hear warranty on the road, and that's going to be resolved, and if it's not resolved, we're going to stay out from it until it gets resolved. But that's the only complaint I've heard, I mean, the projects have gone, and we've done a lot of projects.
And just tell me, do the lot, the lot you've accomplished, and sewer stations, and where else? If our street project is not completed, and it's, it's, it's not even been 15 months, the street's supposed to last 15 years, there's already all kinds of bricks on the streets.
Well, we've already addressed those issues, and...
We don't have any information yet until...
Which will be at the next, which will be at the next meeting.
I agree, to the city man, and I've done my job of providing all the information.
I have a recommendation, table this, so we give the street project completed to our satisfaction.
There's a motion.
Is there, when we discuss, have a...
Oh, well, he just made a motion, so it's still up for discussion.
Well, I don't, as I indicated very briefly, I don't have a problem with us doing multiple projects at one time. I, I, I trust that. The only thing that I'm a little hesitant about is just this, this amount is too high, and I, and I don't have anything based on what is, what is normal. I know it's an important part of the process, I understand that. And so, I, you know, the, at what point, I mean, you're like, entertained dialogue with what we need to do here, I mean, the renovation on the streets may be a lot, and so, you know, if, if that's our protocol, then I can see us starting to get stagnant, not moving forward. So, we need to discuss what we want to do, and what we can do as a council, but...
Like I said, if we bring it down to $30,000...
You heard Rick, he said, it's almost down to the streets.
Yeah. We can bring it down to $30,000, the administrative fee, and if needed, then we'll talk about it later on, for additional fees. If you often want those additional fees, we'll... I mean, you're going to get the best that we can possibly do out here in my world. We care about this town, and I'm telling you, our fees, what we have there for my fees is not enough, but I'm still going to be here and take care of you guys like I've always have for the past seven years. And we've been here with you guys for 16 years, we're not going to turn a blind eye on a couple of streets that are going to, that are broken down and not getting fixed. And we've been here for the longest time, and we'll go get those fixed. And multiple projects, I've had, at one point, I've had nine projects going, and then every project we've completed, and every new project. That's the most projects I've had, at one time, is I've had nine projects here in this town.
Would you be able to renegotiate this with, with your supervisors? Can maybe bring it down lower? I understand you, you want to knock it down to 15,000, but...
15,000?
Yeah. Would you be able to go, go back out and...
We could, we can negotiate, and we let myself and Mr. Jackson see if, if half is going to suffice, you know, if half of that is going to suffice, it's going to be enough to cover the project, and we can put it at 24,000, you know, that's, that's half, but we have to have something in there. Because it's not just me coming out here, it's going to be the engineers, and architects, and structural engineers, and mechanical engineers, coming to check everything, you know, as me, structural engineers, too. So, if, if, and all are good with 24, I can do 24, and then we can, we can renegotiate later on, because you all are willing, except to you guys, depending on what the numbers come in, whether there's enough there for, for more coverage, and we'll put more coverage there. So, we're, we're trying to get you your best advice, you know, so we're looking at different options on how to, how to build this building, whether it be metal frame, metal building, or sticker.
And I, and I understand, I mean, because of the way we're set, we have to go through y'all. I mean, you are an engineer, and we, we can't send the engineering party out, or somebody else. And I get that, I understand that, the whole part of the process, and I guess that's why I was, was thinking, you know, even if, even if we looked at a figure like you're recommending, and then we can always adjust it, you know? At a little time, when we see what it is that we're going to get.
Let's get started, and then see what you get there.
You know, and then, I mean, just, just looking, I mean, now, is it going to be at 1.1 feet or 1.4? I mean, I'm trying to remember, seems like that's what was allowed.
It's going to be, there's 1.2, there's at least 1.2, at least.
And so, so if you take 1.2, you net out 2, that's about 1 million, and you're talking about 3,700 square feet, right?
30, 30 feet, 3700.
Yeah, so anyway, cost side of that, divided by 3,700, so that's $270 square foot total, total, total.
That's the high end. That was at the high end.
Yeah.
Right? At the highest, 3700.
That's not including your cost either, because I just did net, I mean, that's just, that's just...
So, I'll work with this, with this, with that number, with the percentages, that's why those, you got those percentages, and I don't know the numbers that, that we, the architect and the engineer, I just presented to you guys. So, I just know what our administrative fees are, because, I mean, I look at my number all the time, and when we do a year-long project, it's usually about $4,000. It's usually about $4,800, and when we do a year-long project with me on it, it's $4,800, for at least, you know, two, three days out here, or two days, but I give you guys one.
Well, 270 is the low side, the high side would be 300.
295, I believe it was?
Or square foot.
Or square foot, 295.
Well, I did, I did a million divided by 3,700, I give it the low one, 270, and then 1.2 million divided by 3,300, gives the high side, which is 360, so between...
Well, you want to do a million, do a million divided by 3,300, and we're working with a million dollars of construction.
So that's 312 dollars.
312, that's the high end.
Yes, sir.
And usually, when, once we give an estimate, it usually comes in right at the estimate or underneath the estimate, especially when we make contact with some of the good contractors out there, and they know what we have to work with, and they'll, they'll usually come in under, usually under the mid-range, you're looking at, we hear between 280 and 285 square feet.
Robert.
I understood that you wanted to reduce to construction administration services, but I'm more concerned about the design. That's, that's, that's $100, $150,000. Is there any way we can work that?
That design fee? No, sir, that design fee, it's, it's already, like I said, you know, it's, our, our norm is usually between 12 and 15%, probably more, between 14 and 18%. So, our, on the, on the, on the design fee, I can't work with that.
That's not him. That's the other companies.
That's the architect, that's his, those are his fees, and of course, he's got, he's got all the geotechnics, and he's got, I mean, he's got a bunch of other fees, mechanical engineering, structural engineering, I mean, all, all kinds of fees are in there. They're all brought from, to, 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 to...
So, fees haven't changed regardless of the size of the building?
So, we have it, like I said, we, we can't tell you, we're hoping you get 4,000 square feet, but we can't tell you until we start getting the concept, and we can start getting viewers, okay, more or less, what's going to happen.
So is that, is that fee going to remain $150,000? So, is that, is that fee going to remain a hundred and fifty thousand if we give a design that has four dollars worth of?
Versus a thirty-three hundred?
Yes, versus a design that has three dollars worth of?
You won't get AQS in thirty-three hundred. That's our goal, and that's what we're here to say. And that's what we're working on.
But what he's asking is to fee lower with the square-
He's the same.
The fee's going to stay the same, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Whether, whether we design you and we, or at least, we, you know, we get bidders that say, hey, you know what, we can do it for two hundred and fifty dollars per foot, and we're going to bet on it. We designed something for forty-five hundred square feet, then it's the same fee.
You had a question, sir?
I just had a question, question, yeah. Is the use of that money time sensitive?
That I cannot answer, I don't know.
What, what was the question?
If it was time-sensitive on us getting that money spent. Um, they didn't say anything about being by deadline, but they did simply get started. I don't know if there's a, a, this is a timeline or not.
It's ours.
How that's, well, the money that the bank is ours, the one point two, the one point two million, that's the whole amount we haven't seen yet. Um, so the money that the bank is ours, we received that check, there's six hundred and one hundred dollars in there. The one point two we have, now we don't see that money until we start showing up bills.
Yeah.
Oh, then that's time-sensitive.
And that'll be, uh, that'll be a, they'll give that as a lump sum, is that near to any problem?
Well, yeah, they'll give it to us as we need it. Um, because if we have to spend up to that amount, we don't get that full amount. They're not going to give us one point two million dollars to build a six hundred dollar dollar building.
Do, do you think they're going to give it to you like in progress building, like?
That's what, that's what she said they were going to do.
Okay. But you, you know, they'll, as we do five hundred thousand, aren't we, the work, they'll give us a check of five hundred thousand, I guess?
So, that is our goal. Our goal is to, is to try to, to get your best back in your pocket, okay? But mind you, we have to do all this, you know, behind the scenes, get it to that point. So, once we get to the conceptual, what we're going to do, then we can start looking, okay, what can we say more? Can we do this, can we use this kind of, uh, roofie? Can we use this kind of, you know, any, everything and anything that we can do to try to set in every single opinion, so you can make a whole progress. That's our ultimate goal.
All righty. Any other questions?
Are you?
Go, Bob.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So, can you go back to the table with L and B?
I, I have, I have, on architectural fees, I cannot come down at all. Now, administrative fees, I bring them down to twenty-four thousand.
So, which he dropped in half?
So, it's twenty-two thousand?
He's already dropped that in half from forty-eight.
Which will bring me now-
Check out my dad.
To a hundred and ninety-eight thousand seven hundred and sixty.
That's fourteen, fourteen, on one point four million, that's fourteen point one.
Forty percent.
It's on one point two is what we're working with. We don't have, we don't have, we're going with a budget of one point two.
So, it's not being thirteen?
It's six point five.
How?
Six, sixteen point five.
Sixteen point five?
If you draw it, if you draw it before eighty to twenty-four, the total fee is twenty, that's two hundred dollars, seven hundred and fifty. It's a hundred and ninety thousand, a hundred and ninety-eight thousand.
But this also, Tika, this is also going to be progress building, I mean, he's going to, it's a two-month process, but he's going to bring us, you know, areas between now and the first of October, he's going to bring in his stuff and say, this is what we look like. You got to approve this, I mean, we're four thousand square feet, this roof, us, you know, so we're going to, we're going to get briefed on every step of the process. And we'll be making decisions based on what he brings.
I tried to hit the home run in the first one, because it's cost-effective for us, but it usually takes about two hundred meters, until you guys decide. The most it's taken for me is three. Because I, I listen to you guys and I'll move, I mean, I would actually let you guys drive out, and I'll put it in this here, and here, and here, we're going to make everything work. But with the same footprint that we, that we're going to have, what, what money we're looking for?
Well, I heard him say he wants to save us every penny that-
Yes, yes, I've always tried to do that, to make the test.
So, we're going to expect the same all-star service, and will this take that?
Yes, sir.
Fourteen thousand dollars?
Twenty-four?
Twenty-four, twenty-four.
I mean, if that's, that's thought, you know, there's a motion on the table.
Okay. There, any other questions before we move forward? There has been one motion on the table. Is there a second? Is there a second? Okay, motion dies.
Madam Mayor, I'll, I'll make a motion that we move forward, that we take L and B's uh, uh, reduction on the line item for construction to have any fees of twenty-four thousand, and take this down to twenty-four thousand, and adjust the bottom line forty-three, and, um, move forward with this project.
There's a second motion on the table, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of, for the change, by show of hands? There's two, all against? So, guess who gets to break the tide? Is two-two? Four. Go ahead with the project.
I'll work on this, and try to get something to you guys by fourteen, and try to get some, some, uh, footprints, footprints.
By fourteen, does this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're moving on to item four A, discussion of possible action regarding ordinance number two zero one eight thousand zero seven thousand zero four, amended the adopted budget for the fiscal year, October first, twenty seventeen. Action item, need to, uh, make a motion to discuss, please? May I have a second? All in favor? Discussion, please.
Madam Mayor, counsel, about a minute or two ago, I don't remember exactly when it was, um, there was a comment or question raised about how much longer H U B abatement was going to be in place. Um, I've never, never seen the abatement agreement, and so we started digging around trying to find the abatement area. Um, in the process of all, we were digging around trying to find the abatement area, we received a phone call from H U B, um, claiming they owed us two hundred thousand dollars. Um, what we find, we did find, um, is that there was never an abatement done to H U B, there was a three-eighty, uh, economic development agreement done. Under a tax abatement, um, that land value is set at zero, at the appraisal district, and they don't pay taxes. Under a three-eighty economic development agreement, they pay taxes and we refund, and we have never refunded their taxes. Back to twenty-twelve, agreement was signed in twenty-ten, should have been in the budget in twenty-twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, all those years, was never put into it. Um, same time they came to us, came to the county, it's exactly the same thing happened at the county, never refunded them either. Um, so, we started digging around trying to figure out what we could actually do with this. Um, county, I think if their last regular meeting, wanted to pay them, I think the county paid about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars was the final number they came out with. I talked to Tracy a couple of times to try to figure out how they determined what they were going to pay them, if they just took what H U B told them was owed and paid out if it is something else, and she said, no, they went and got their own numbers. So, Josie went to the appraisal district and done a bunch of digging with the appraisal district to find out they only had actually been paid. Um, H U B sent a spreadsheet, uh, that is what they thought we owed them, and that spreadsheet, which is the little one you asked about all ago, it's this one, this is what they sent us. According to their spreadsheet, they say we owe two hundred and three thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars to six S. Uh, based on what we've found and what we went back and looked at, we don't agree with that number, we believe we owe them a hundred and, what is it, a hundred and eighty thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-six. Um, they claimed on the spreadsheet, if you look at the bottom of it, they claimed in twenty-twelve, that they paid tax on two properties, um, and that the total taxes were about thirty thousand dollars, based on what we found, the appraisal district, they did not pay taxes on two properties, they paid taxes on one, and it was a thirteen thousand dollar property, that those properties were unsplit until twenty-thirteen. Um, so they've now, where, I don't know how, there's, there was obviously something done wrong over there, because the thirteen thousand dollars would have been on a value of like three hundred and twenty-one thousand, and when that whole thing was completed, the value was actually a percent of million. Um, so, that year, they were charged wrong by the appraisal district. In twenty-thirteen, they paid based on appraised values that the appraisal district came up with. H U B protested those values, and they were given a refund on some of that in twenty-fourteen and then twenty-fifteen, uh, three thousand dollar refund was sent back to them each year. Um, they didn't account for any of that in the spreadsheet. So, we went back and took out the seventy thousand dollar payment that they said they made and they didn't. Um, and then took out those two refunds that they received also, um, on taxes that they had paid, and we verified that all the other numbers that they had in the spreadsheet were true, and that was what they had actually paid, the present, what they'd actually paid in taxes to the city for those payments. So, total value those people gave was a write-off of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Um, agreement's had effect until twenty-twenty-three, um, so it doesn't end next year, but we still got, we only have it through. Um, under the, now, why it was done under a three-eighty economic development agreement, if we had a business come in today, and that's what they asked for, was a tax abatement to build their, to put their business in place, a three is what I would recommend to the council, for one reason, because if they don't meet the conditions, that three that you can cancel at any time. An abatement, you can't just cancel. Um, that abatement is pretty much set in stone, but under a three-eighty agreement, if they don't meet their requirements, um, you can cancel, I mean, stroke, yeah, it's canceled, and they don't get that benefit. Um, so, there's a couple of things with that. So, if you have a new business coming in, that would be, to me, that would be the best way for the council, for the city to do that, because then you can hold them to a level of performance. Um, so I would assume that's why it was under three-eighty agreement, was to hold them to a level of performance. Problem is, we can't hold them to any level before this, because we have a form for the contract. So, if there is something that they didn't need in that three-eighty agreement, it doesn't matter at all, uh, because we're the ones that are out of compliance of the agreement by not paying, they're not, and, and so we can't say, we can't go back and say, oh, well, you're supposed to do this and you didn't do it, so we're not going to pay you. Um, we might talk to our city attorney about this, I talked to a couple other, uh, city attorneys in towns that do a lot of these three-eighty agreements, that all agree, are in choice to pay us, because we won't. If there's a condition in that contract that has not been met in that agreement that has not been met, then we could cancel it. Um, that would be a decision we would have to make, also take into account the fact that they're a community partner, we really, really do have to be a part. Um, and that would be, that would be, there'll be a lot more discussion on something like that. Um, so, if it was me, I would recommend it, I doubt you would have stuck it in the budget where everybody did not know what was there. I think that should have been done where every year, there was a reminder, um, even if it was put in the, even if it was put in the budget for the next year. So, the way that agreement read was until basically, until they opened the store, the city or the county or one were responsible for doing the refund, uh, but from the point that happened for ten years, they're responsible for the refund for ten years. Um, so, the agreement was signed in twenty-ten or twenty-eleven, they didn't open the store until a year later. Um, so, that first year, it didn't have to be in the budget, but the next year should have been, the city manager was here, he should have put it in, but, um, for whatever reason, they didn't put it in, no, just so nobody ever knew, same thing happened to the county, the county person didn't put it in, so county, so they're supposed to pay you. What we, what happened was, or what, the way this all kind of finally came to a head, was the person that was responsible for three-eighty agreements for H U B got fired for not getting their job, because they weren't bringing in the money they were supposed to bring in. And they put a new person in there, and they started, so it's not just personal, there's a number of the H U B stores that the cities or the counties or both or other districts owe them under these three-eighty agreements that they haven't paid them. Um, so, we got a new, a new attorney running the three-eighty agreement section for H U B, and they're trying to make a name for themselves real quick. Um, and obviously, they're doing it, uh, because they're bringing in all kinds of money to H U B, to H U B's loan. So, again, I mean, if the needs have anything to do with that end of this, well, obviously there's nothing we can do, we have to pay.
Do we have to pay them all at one time?
What was that?
Do we have to pay them all at, in one lump sum, or we can do increments, or?
Well, um, we're going to, obviously, this has got to be included in the budget next year, I mean, it's a new line item in the budget for the next five years, out of the general fund, because whatever they pay us, we're after a right-around refund, um, during that year. The way the agreements, the way the, the agreements are written is it has to be paid by, I think it's January, sometime January. Um, we can't really know how much we have to refund them though, until they make their payment, because if they make it, why get the start of the taxes and they give a discount? So, if you look on there, there's some of the years where they, they pay ninety-seven percent of the tax based on what they paid it, because they paid it early. Some years, they paid a hundred percent because they didn't pay it early. So, until they actually pay, and the appraisal district sends us, uh, receipts saying that they paid, we don't even know. But we can know what the maximum is, because we know what our tax rate is, and we know what their values are for the year. So, we can calculate it, put it in the budget to know what the maximum would be, but that may not even be the exact number that we set, because if they pay early, we're not going to have to pay all that. Um, but it's definitely a lot of it that's going to be added for the next five years, until this agreement's over. As far as paying it all at one lump sum, um, we have a budget amendment here that allows us to do that. Um, I'll, I'll, after we answer your questions about the agreement specifically, um, I'll talk about that amendment and why we've come up with those numbers, and why we think it's important to get it all paid off before the end of this fiscal year. Um, and then before, I mean, it's, every time we turn around, it's something from five years ago, but it's just holding a cloud over us, and I don't want that cloud sticking around for five, four years for me to get it done. Um, and this is one of the things that's, you know, we've had some discussions recently about, well, there's money in the budget, we're not spending it. This is one of the reasons I'm scared to death to spend every penny in the budget, is because you, these things just pop up every time we turn around. Um, but we do have enough in some line items that I plan on doing other stuff with based on what the council approved, that we can use to pay this and get this out of the way.
Yes, Ben.
Um, the thing, the thing that I don't understand is, Tika, how this money flows, I mean, wouldn't this be the tax office's responsibility? I mean-
The three-eighty agreement wasn't with the appraisal district. If it's an abatement, then the appraisal district would have been involved. The three-eighty agreement is between the entity and the entity, so they're really not, they're not part of it.
It's a, and, and it's a hundred percent abatement, so whatever they pay-
Whatever they pay, they give back, yes, sir.
But, but the tax office does collect it?
Yes. They know, the tax office, so the tax office, like, the three-eighty agreement, the tax office, they're the only thing that exists. They send out their annual tax bill, they get paid, they forward money to us, and then we, then it's our responsibility to give the three-eighty agreement to refund that money once again.
And there was, there was nothing from H U B ever saying-
Nope.
Hey, you guys owe us-
Not to us or the county, that's why we're not buying it off.
Um, and it is, it is interesting to see their tax guy, I mean, uh, drop, I guess it's because they've got folks working for them that go in there, I mean, nobody else is taxed, I mean, you draw like that.
And if you look at it, basically, a five years of tax value, you've got now, they And if you look at it basically, five years of tax value, you've got, they've got, we're worth eight million dollars or four million dollars. Now, granted, there's a depreciation that goes along with you, I mean, you understand that with commercial business, there's a set depreciation. That's way higher.
We don't get that.
That's way higher than the IRS depreciation rate.
Yeah. Anyway, that, that, that's not part of this equation, but geez. So what's your recommendation?
That's like, if anybody has any questions about the agreement itself before we start talking about the amendment.
I understand this, but, uh, their HEB is not willing to negotiate.
So we've been trying to get our ducks in a row before we really sit down and talk to them, because we want to know exactly, um, somebody just sends me this bill and says, "This is what you owe me," no, that's not going to do that. We're going to make sure this is what you owe me. And so it took us a little bit to get all of our stuff together for those, to get the appraisal district to get those actual values. When we were told that in twenty-twelve, they didn't pay that second bill, I mean, they have it down on the sheet to the payment, what they say they paid. We're still not positive that they did pay it in appraisal this month. Um, but we're going to go with the information that we have. I think that's what Tracy did, I tried to get Tracy to call me back this afternoon, so I can, they, the county was really, I tried to get the county to come meet with me about this when this first happened. Uh, so we could see what they told down, what we had and kind of see if we can all agree on how to do this similar, uh, so that it all worked out. They would come in, um, they would be very happy to talk to us and then they just went in and approved payment. But she did tell me that they did pay what HEB has. Um, so my assumption right now, and that's all I can do, is make an assumption, is that they dropped that twenty-twelve number off too. There, I know they refunded somewhere around a hundred eighty thousand dollars, which would be very similar to what we're doing, which in a way kind of doesn't make sense if it's not the same as ours.
Right.
Um, so I don't know, but, but in years prior to twenty-fifteen, their tax rate retired. So maybe it all washed out, maybe it was just coincidence, if the two rates ended up being pretty close to the same amount. Um, but I don't know, their three eighty agreement says, their three eighty agreement may say something, their three eighty agreement may say that they refunded the exact same amount they paid the city out of, like, the way we have seen.
I think that might be because their tax rate was higher than ours was lower at one time?
They're very well, they're very well, because they were two and five, they were forty-three.
Yeah.
You know, and then we had two years where it was, but then there's four years of that, that it was, so it was lower two, so very well could be what it is. Um, and the years, the years where they were higher was the big number years for HEB, that's the years when they were worth seven million and six million dollars. The years where we were higher, the years they were worth five million and four million. Um, so obviously that's a little bit of a, you know, that's a shift too, I mean, they're very welcome before it's, it's, it worked out to be about the same or not. But I haven't seen what they did, so I don't know, because they won't show it to you. I said, I haven't seen what the county did or what they got because they didn't, so I don't really know, it's all something.
I'm just thinking, HEB and community.
I know.
Something. I'm here. So, you want me to talk to you?
Yes.
Um, so that, so you've got numbers to show one eighty is what we want, and you're?
The number they saw when Josie got the appraisal district, that's what we're sticking to.
Okay.
Until they.
We, we can support you.
We're going to support that with their tax, their tax bill pay receipts.
Yeah.
With the refund check receipts and with the email from the appraiser or from the tax planner saying that twenty-twelve, they did not pay twice what they want.
Okay, okay, cool.
But it still may all be negotiable.
Well, so, so I mean, what we say is, I mean, the numbers are high, it's one hundred eighty thousand, here, here it is. You know, so that, that's the number that you're recommending that we go with. That's the, and then.
If we, if we can negotiate it down, do something different, great, um, we just have that for now.
Okay.
But if there are those like they were when we tried to give them to come out on the price of the old building or whatever else and say, "No, we're not losing any money on this, this is your responsibility. You signed the agreement, uh, we want to get paid," well, it's worked out and we've got a budget amendment to pay.
But the three eighty doesn't include this old building, just the new building?
I mean, you can't even find most of that whole building, because there's something to make it on the old building too.
Excuse me?
And I can't find anything on it either.
But HEB has.
Oh, I bet they do too, wouldn't be surprised if that, the oldest person's not big a part of it.
So they're not paying taxes on this building either?
They're not paying full taxes on that building. They were getting an abatement on that building when they got the three eighty agreement, that might be part of the reason it was known as a three eighty agreement over here, because it was something different.
Well, this is like twenty years old.
So the tax will value on it's probably down by next, uh, next enough, because I guarantee you the tax will value is not what they're asking for.
Especially with those tanks there.
All right, so where do we go from here, what's the next step?
So you have a budget amendment in front of you. Um, and that budget amendment is suggesting about four things, everybody have their amendment, this is.
Yeah, one other question, I mean, they're, they're not trying to, maybe you can, it'll be a person that you're.
No, no, they sent this spreadsheet that shows nothing, they're saying that's what they want, um, we're going to disagree with year twelve, with twenty-twelve. Until this is what we'll do, that's what the county did, they took the payment, that's all. Okay, so everybody has the budget amendment in front of them, um, what we're, what we're talking about is looking at starting with, um, in the, in the general, it's all back to general.
Correct, behind him.
So with the general fund, we talked about this, um, a couple of meetings ago on that one line item for consultants and contracts. Um, that sixty thousand dollars that was sitting in there that has not been spent in the last few years, we're talking about using that as a starting point for this. Um, so maybe that sixty, because that would be an appropriate line item to pay for it out of its contract. Um, so that would be the line item to move everything into, because it could be paid straight out of there. Um, there's sixty thousand dollars in that right now, um, so what that would be is, we saw about another hundred twenty thousand dollars. Um, we had in the administrative budget also twenty-five thousand dollars of budget for the master plan for this year that we have not spent. Um, so we're recommending that that be moved into consultants and contracts, that would get us up to eighty-five thousand. And then in the streets department, we have a hole of money in the streets department for, um, streets and roadways, repairs and maintenance, and seal coating. What we had hoped to do with that money before the end of the year was to do a big, um, intersection project. We're going to try to start on that about the middle of this month, go back, and the majority of our roads in town, the worst places on our roads are the intersections, because that's where those trucks are turning and that's why they get torn up some of that. And what we were going to do was go in with our zipper, um, zip them, use our small compactor to compact them, and they get a payment company to go back over and redo all these many intersections until we're hoping we're going to be able to get about thirty-five or forty. Still, I knew that, but we can't move forward with this type, I mean, we gotta, there's gotta be, we gotta pay for it somehow. Um, part of the reason that we held off as long as we did on those street projects is again, this is going to be the first year and not knows how long ago we've actually met our revenue budget. Um, we, Josie and I have sat down and looked at this repeatedly, there's, there's really no way we can't, well, there is a way. Um, but as long as we hit, uh, right around a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in sales tax for the next two months, we'll hit our revenue budget.
Awesome.
Uh, which means all the money we said was going to be there is actually there. Um, so.
What, what about the expense side?
Well, the expense side, we're still less than a hundred percent. So revenues are at a hundred percent, expense side we're less than a hundred percent, and we're, and we're, nobody's going to go over a hundred percent. So we know we're actually going to come out the way it's supposed to. Um, so, but historically, we've had all this stuff, we've had this money for the street, roadways, and repair, and seal coating, that money's always been budgeted, but the revenues never showed up. So a lot of, we, we still manage the budget this year like I was, like I've been forced to do it since I got here with, we're not going to spend money until we know we have it, so until we can see that those revenues are going to be here, we're not going to spend it early, we'll spend it late. That's a lot easier to spend it late and have it than it is to spend it early and then we're going to get it, which is what we saw happen in twenty-fifty, uh, with the, with the, the pay scale bill that was done, was there was, there was a projection that all the sales tax was going to be there and it never showed up, and there was no way to pay for it, so we had six months, well, I imagine six months, we didn't spend any money for the first six months because we didn't have anyone. Um, so we know we're going to hit the revenue side this time, we know we're going to be under on the, on the expenditure side, so we, we know we can do this. And so when we, about a month and a half ago, I guess it was, eh, a month and a half, two, two months ago, we started working with, um, with Rick on this, this intersection project, this was going to be a big surprise this year, was we're going to, we do all these intersections, the roads are going to get a whole lot nicer real quick. Um, but then we get the other kind of surprises every time we turn around too, like this three eighty agreement was. Um, so based on how this year went, I'm pretty confident that our revenue projections for next year are good. And so as long as we get the budget done inside those revenue projections, I'll be a lot more comfortable with doing projects like this at the start of the year in one department than waiting until the end of the year.
Mm-hmm.
So the reality is, this project I want to try to do on the intersections, we can, we can move that money now. Um, and it doesn't move all the money, I mean, it doesn't take all the money, we can still get some, we can still get some of it done, not near the scale that I wanted. We may get fifteen intersections done instead of thirty-five. Uh, we can still get some of them done, but then going into the next budget year, we just keep going. And that will, will, will be more confident that those revenues are going to be there and we'll go ahead and do some more of those. We still, we can still get the thirty-five or forty intersection done, um, but part of it will be budgeted for this year and part of it will have to come out next year.
Which, because we can still get it done by Christmas, what you're saying?
Yeah.
Because it would just be.
We just need two budgets here instead of one budget here.
Yes, sir.
That, that, that would, it's a big problem.
Yes.
I'm a little confused because is this sixty, ninety, and fifty thousand, is that out of general fund?
It is general fund.
Okay. So how much out of general fund have we spent so far on these three items?
I didn't remember what it was about earlier. Um, taking the streets and roadways, repairs and maintenance is about thirty thousand. Um, streets and roadways, we have not spent very much of that and the seal coating's been done. Uh, we've not done any seal coating at all. We have talked about potentially trying to do the parking lot of the sports complex with that. Um, and we've talked about maybe seal coating, um, Gilley Road with that, um, as a follow-up to what was done out there before. But that fifty thousand hasn't been touched yet. Um, the repairs and maintenance, I think we spent about thirty thousand out of there, thirty, yeah, about thirty thousand out of there. And the streets and roadways, I think maybe four or five out of there, Rex, because that's what's happening.
Four or five thousand. I think that's, that's a, that's a repair budget, you know what that is?
That's a general budget for repairs.
And that's about the only place in the general, general fund we have to pull out of money, I mean, we're talking about coming up with almost a quarter million dollar.
Okay, the other, the other question I have is, uh, when we talked about the, I think it was mentioned the last time, uh, the intersection project. And Rick talked about the extra money we're going to have saving on the streets project, and that money is going to be twenty sixteen on, right? So that intersection project, was it going to come out of twenty sixteen surplus, extra money?
Well, we were going to start with this, um, but if there was extra money and you guys wanted us to continue with some of the bond money, that could be used for that too. All right, so what are, so I've asked them at the May, at the May, at the, um, August meeting, so we've got this one tonight, we have the next budget workshop next Tuesday and then the Tuesday after, that's the regular. So what we've asked them to do is at that next regular meeting, to bring us another updated bond budget. Uh, so we can look at that because you guys have asked for rental street to be put back on there again. Um, and so they're, they're going to come up with an estimated cost on that project on rental street. And then we're going to look at what's left over in the bond projects, so that, that rental street project, so it'll be a one point five to two million dollar project, I don't think it's due.
What street is that?
But.
Or rental street.
Two thousand four, so they're going to provide it. But then we'll know, by that time, we'll know what's left, we should have a pretty good idea of what's left for everything and we can look at the other priorities, other things that need to be done out of the bond and maybe, you know, we can easily, if there's, depending on what's left over, part of that could be put in the intersection project too.
Uh, these intersection, they're going to cost about how much per, roughly?
Well, we're thinking with us doing the, the, the zipping and with us doing the compacting, we're going to get the cost down somewhere between thirty-five hundred and four thousand each. And we're going to do, and so you see how they, they go back, you know, it's not just the square, it's.
Yeah, it was thirty, thirty yards.
Yeah, that ribbon, that ribbon intersection, because the turning starts before you actually get a middle intersection, so that's what we're talking about.
Um, are we going to do a survey on, on the, the traffic in that, those areas before we decide which ones take more priority than others? Or how's that going to be predetermined?
Well, so we, the way we started this is we had, uh, a couple of our employees go out and look at which ones were the worst. You know, I mean, we may have some that are high traffic that have got some problems, and we've got some maybe not quite as high traffic, but the potholes are fixed for them. You know, so we kind of, we kind of want to look at the condition, so they're taking pictures of them, um, and taking, you know, how many potholes, how bad it is, you know, can get through without hitting the pothole, that kind of stuff, and we kind of thought, maybe, you know, maybe we'll take ten from the highest traffic areas, you know, ten from around the schools and ten that are the absolute worst. And so that way it's not just based on, um, because, you know, that's part of the reason that the roads, I think, kind of ended up in the shape that they did is some of those that weren't supposed to be high traffic areas, um, just kept getting ignored, it kept getting ignored, it kept getting ignored. Um, and so now some of those places have got really bad and it's like, well, there's not that much traffic out there, so worry about it. Well, for those people, those people pay taxes too, and they've been driving through all the potholes for twenty years, or some people high traffic here, they've been driving home for a year. Um, so we're, we're kind of trying, you know, we wanted to get, all the information we had to get on the intersections and then figure out what we had for money, how many can we do? And, you know, if we can do thirty, great, if we can do fifty, great, you know, if we figure out a way to pay for all of them, you bet. Um, you know, and that was, you know, so that, we hadn't really gotten that far. Um, we, I did tell them to focus around schools, um, to really take a good look around schools. Um, and then those ones that weren't the absolute worst, I want to know which ones were the absolute worst.
Thirty, thirty intersection, roughly, how many intersection do you think we have, roughly, that would be?
I don't, the total number we have to tell, I'm not sure. I mean, I, I, I would think thirty may be, thirty may be one-fifth, one-sixth of what we have now. Um, so if we can do that four or five years in a row out of that streets budget, I mean, that's a big, big, big difference in our streets real quick.
All, all it knows, we have to get started, I mean, we have to, we have to start.
The part of bond road that's ours, have you had a chance to look at that? Because we've had so many calls.
That's the next place they're going, they're finishing up on the stuff on, on West Colorado that everybody was complaining about, and bonds the next, next year after.
Got like seventeen emails.
Some of those things on West Colorado, bigger than the truck, I mean, it's, there were some that were bad.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, and I need to understand this, uh, you're saying that the streets and roadways, repair, maintenance, and seal coating, that money, we have to wait until we get the revenues in to be able to use it?
I'm saying that based on the history of the revenues here, at the start of the budget year, we weren't spending huge line items like that until we made sure we made revenues.
So, so we've only spent five thousand in the streets and the roadways and thirty in repairs and maintenance, right? Is that because we didn't have the money in the budget?
Well, the money was in the budget, we had to make sure that we made the revenues.
And the revenues?
And we started getting a handful of revenues in July.
Is there, is there, uh, uh, something else we can do to, to prepare the streets all along and not have to wait that long?
Well, that thirty-something thousand that was spent on repairs was spent on the potter patch, I mean, that's been supplies and materials for potter patch. Um, so, yeah, they've been, they've been making repairs all along. Um, in that kind of, I mean, having a hundred and some thousand dollars in there, you can't, you're not going to hire somebody to come in and fix it, you're not going to completely rebuild the streets doing that. Um, what would be great would be if we could get an agreement with the county that we have before for their construction, if they're coming in, use this money to pay them to help us with the streets. Um, especially that streets and roadways, and if you look back, some of the projects that were done in the past, that's exactly what that money was put in the budget for. Um, there was agreements with the county, the county road crew came in and said, "You paid for the materials," just like we did on Gilley Road. Um, they, they brought their road crews in, they did the work, we paid for the materials and those roads had done. For us to completely reconstruct a, a portion of the road, you know, we have, we would have to rent so much equipment. Um, you're going to spend up, you're going to spend the majority of the money you have here on your equipment rental and not on actually building road. Um, so we, so we kept the potter machine going, we kept those things going, but to do those large wholesale repairs, it's, it's a different story.
So, so the fiscal year starts in October, so how long did we need to wait until we could use some money for these, uh, items?
Well, I said, when we hit, so we got to, I think it was in June, we were, so we were, we were looking at the halfway mark. Um, and when we got to June, we thought we were getting to that point, and in June, our sales tax dropped fifty-nine thousand dollars on the June, or June of the month, the year before. Um, so that gave me a pretty serious concern. We had done pretty good, we had stayed right about where we had projected it was going to be all along, and then all of a sudden we're, we're sixty. And, uh, in April, we were thirty thousand short, then in May, we came back up, in June, we were forty thousand short, and then in July, we came back up. And that, and, and so it's, we're trying to watch those trends to make sure that we're going to hit that market at the end of the year. Um, see, I mean, you've got to remember, we, we have a, a small group of revenues, our property taxes, we're pretty sure we're going to hit those at the start of every year. Um, our franchise fees, and after we adjusted those last year, we were pretty comfortable in those. Um, so the one big one that can change quite a bit is the sales tax, that's the one that killed us in twenty fifteen.
So these numbers are for, for sales tax money?
Sales tax money goes in the general fund.
Like on the sales tax, man, or?
Our, our, our property taxes probably.
That's true. So, uh, it, it could be possible to appropriate for streets sooner than June.
Um, once we're comfortable that, that, that revenue side will do better, all the other things, salaries come out of the general fund, we got to pay for utilities, I mean, all those things, we, we don't have any choice. So if they get paid, they're not also coming out of it too. And so if you end up, you know, two hundred fifty, three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars short on your sales tax projections for the year, or something happens and you don't bring that in, you can't go back and adjust people's paychecks, you can't go back and, you can't tell the electric company, "Well, I'm sorry, we didn't get our revenues, so we're not going to pay you right now." It's these other things, these other big line items are the ones that we're always really careful with, until we're sure we're going to get that one.
So, so like the fifty thousand that we had left over last fiscal year, that we had used some of that for streets?
Um, we probably could have, uh, one, and that's one of the things we have to set up before the end of this year, is actually set up that reserve fund. And so at the end of the year, that first meeting and the, and the next fiscal year, we can transfer money to that reserve fund and then we'll know how much is in there. Um, and then at some point, that money can be pulled, then you have to remember, that money in the reserve, whatever's in reserve on October first is, it's all still in the same bank account. We don't start getting the property taxes, it's okay. Um, so, you know, we got to be really careful that we don't end up in a negative balance in the general fund those first couple of months, uh, because the auditors don't like that, you're not, we're not supposed to be using bond money to make payroll, you, you know, it's all in the same account, but you got to keep it separated, that's all we do to pull cash reward. And so we have to make sure we put that general fund number above zero, like, you know, we'll pay salaries and lights and gas and everything else, we've got to keep that number above zero because that gets us a couple of dollars. So first two or three months, you don't get those big taxpayers, you're getting your sales tax, you're getting those things, but you're not getting your property taxes until you get into January and February. So you're pretty much in March before you get way ahead on what's in your general fund anyway. Um, so then that's when we start, it's like, oh, it's like, okay, let's start looking, then all of a sudden in April, sales tax dropped way out. It's like, okay, not comfortable yet, May, they went back up, okay, getting comfortable, again, June, they go back down, it's like, okay, not, not really comfortable yet. Now we're at the point where we know we have to hit the next two months, um, to make our, 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 our sales tax projections, that we're pretty comfortable last time. But if there have been a lot of those hundred thirty-eight thousand dollar months for no reason, and all of a sudden now, the last month, we're going to have to hit two hundred something thousand, right? Um, so it's, you know, it's, you know, it would be nice, you know, it would be nice to be in a city where property taxes were the exact same every year, and sales taxes were the exact same every year, and there's so many of the other cities that they don't tackle what they're going to have every year from the start.
Um, so with the annexation, would, couldn't we increase this because of that, that income that's going to be coming in for that?
Sure.
You know, and allocate some of that money for?
Absolutely.
For the repairs, you know?
Absolutely, and then, but next Tuesday, in the workshop next Tuesday, that's part of what we'll be talking about, because we'll do general fund next, on the event. And we actually, I guess we're talking about a budget amendment so we can talk about budget stuff. We actually got really good news yesterday, we got our final appraisal values and that thirty-five million dollar deficit that they estimated went away. We're within a hundred dollars for our appraisal values flash. Uh, so that's a big, that was a quarter million dollars out of the budget just because those numbers are right. Uh, so that was huge, and so now that, that's why we're doing your budget site and general fund line next week, because we're still waiting for that number to come in, so we knew what to do for property taxes. Because until we got those estimated values, we have a quarter million dollar big difference. So until we got those final numbers, I mean, there was no, we, 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 we worked out the revenue side, um, minus that property tax, but until we got that final value, we couldn't. I didn't want to start it based a whole budget on something that was a quarter million dollar bond. So now we can, now we're going to finish up the next week, a year ago.
Well, I, I think it would be great if we end up with positives, like last, last year, and if we could take some of those and, and then. we could take some of those and maybe the annexation numbers, and start running, running into street repairs, like, you know, for, for, whatever, that has to go on.
Sure. And like I said, that was the whole idea with the intersection project, once we got comfortable, it's like, now we can start doing something right now, you know, it's gonna be this big surprise, and we're just gonna go start and run it, and get to people. It seems like every time we get to a point where we can have a good surprise, we get another bad surprise.
And here, so if we approve this, and it's gonna leave us twenty-five thousand, so that'll, like, like you're saying, that'll give us the opportunity to get eight or nine intersections.
Well, it's gonna be, it's gonna be more than half, I mean, it's gonna leave, it's gonna leave, uh...
We've got sixty thousand in there, we're gonna take thirty-five thousand out, and then we...
At least twenty-five, but then there's still twenty-five or thirty-five left in.
There's gonna be a hundred and four thousand five hundred.
Not left.
Well, is that your balance? Oh, I thought, I thought the budget was more, was more...
No, no, the amended budget goes back to October first. So that amended, that amended budget number on the, on the right side is the number we set October first, so we're adjusting it down. So like on that, on repairs and maintenance, the amended, the budget number for the year will go down to seventy-nine thousand five hundred, but we spent thirty-something thousand there. So the balance of that, plus the thirty-five thousand left in streets and roadways, yeah, we're still gonna be able to get started. We just won't be able to have the scope that we were...
And we, we, we won't need to wait till, I mean, we can get, literally, like, next week, start, start doing the inspections?
We're talking about those four. I need to finish this up tonight, so we all get, before we can actually sit down and say, okay, what's the cost of what we're gonna do?
Awesome. Any more questions? Okay. Make a motion, please.
I have one thing, one thing. Motion to approve the budget amendment, pay them on September thirty.
Got it. Whoever's going to entertain them.
And to figure a hundred and eighty thousand for six...
Just, I'll get one.
Madam Mayor, I will make the motion that we approve the ordinance number two-zero-one-eight zero four, excuse me, zero-seven-zero-four, exhibit A of the budget amendment for, um, the payment on the three-sixty ego agreement with H E D.
Three-eighty?
Three.
Three-eighty.
Three.
Three-sixty, all the...
Yeah, remember that. Three-eighty agreement, any amount of a hundred and eighty thousand for sixteen-nine-fifty, and two, we pay September thirty-first?
Thirty.
Thirty, all right. And would you indicate that it's coming to them on that day?
Yes.
There's a motion on the table, may I have a second, please? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, moving on to item five, the workshop. Review and discuss the proposed annual appropriation budget for fiscal year, beginning October twenty-eighth first, twenty-eighteen, ending September thirtieth, twenty-nineteen, as submitted by the City Manager, Finance Director, Administrative Staff. We need to entertain a motion to open the workshop.
Motion.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye. Oh, mayor. So, um, this is the document that I emailed you guys over the weekend, we finished it up on Saturday. So, as we talked about each other, about the indications, everybody in the room does understand, our budget's basically a two-part budget. We have a general fund budget, and we have a utility fund budget. And so what we've done, because the utility fund budget's not based on what we get from the President's district or anyplace else, it's just based on what we do and how we do it against any place else. We went ahead and did the utility fund budget first, because we get how, all the information we need to do the utility fund budget. So what we have up here is a, is a draft budget, we'll go through it and answer any questions you have. I wanna point out one thing before we start, I kind of alluded to this, I moved it a couple meetings ago, but it directly affects the utility fund budget, and it's kind of important, I think, to go through this. So we talked about, we talked about this a few minutes, we have one checking account, but we have forty different funds or whatever that are in that one checking account. So we have a report that comes out every month, it's that claim on pool cash. And so basically, our, our one fund is called our pool cash fund, everything goes in there. The bonds in there, the hot fund goes in there, everything goes into that one fund, general fund goes in there, everything goes in there. And we, so we have one bank account, and that one bank account, at the end of, at the end of the month, we know how much money we have in that one bank account. So this report tells us, okay, out of the four-point-nine million or four-point-six million, so that's four-point-six million dollars we have in the bank account, here's where that money belongs. Now, this is what belongs. It belongs, the general fund has this much money in the account, Grant has this much money, whatever. So, in the budget this year, we got away from having separate utility funds, and we created a single utility fund to fix the problem with the gas part. So I wanna point this out, so when you look at this claim, this, this claim on, on pool cash, we had to, on October first, make a clean cut to walk away from the old accounts and start with the new. So there was outstanding balances in the whole, and so we just left those sitting. So if you look at the first one that's up there that's highlighted, I didn't realize this color is gonna be as hard to see on the screen as it is.
We have this sheet for...
I can get your copy.
That's right, that's right.
No, let's get your, let's get your copies. Oh, it's easier to see, because I, that color's pretty mustardy up there. It wasn't mustardy, no, 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 we copy, we copy, Crystal, we copy.
Is this current, is this...
We did this on Saturday.
Chuck, Larry.
So, yes, it was current as of Saturday. So, those first, the first ones, general fund, and then the next four under that are those, the next three of that, excuse me, are those, I shouldn't have highlighted the fourth, but that's my fault. Water and sewer, plant, which is fund two, gas, which is fund three, and sanitation, which is trash, which is fund three. So at the end of, at the end of the fiscal year, we had to just cut those and go to the utility fund. So because there was still outstanding, outstanding debts against those, as we paid those last bills, we weren't putting the revenue, when people were paying their bills, we weren't putting the revenue in that fund anymore, we're putting it into this utilities fund. So we paid that last set of bills on each one, so they're one of, the, the ones that weren't already negative, ended up going slightly negative, and we knew that was gonna happen. But if you look at those top three, with, of course, gas being the biggest problem, there was a deficit of eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents. That's what we talked about at the start of the fiscal year, primarily talking about that gas deficit, which had been there for years. And that gas deficit was up to seven-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand dollars at the end of the year, we talked about that at the start of the budget year. But when you add it in, the, the deficit that was created by cutting the fund, by cutting the revenues to the fund, before we paid the last bill out of the fund, we ended up with a deficit of sixty thousand in sanitation, and thirty thousand in water sewer, and, and water sewer. So a total of eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents. But if you look down at the bottom now, fund thirty-five, which is the new one we created last year, that's our utility fund. And if you look at the balance of that utility fund right now, our balance in that utility fund is six-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars and ninety-six cents. That's what the bond already taken out, that's what everything that needs to be taken out for the year already taken out, so we still have to pay a couple bills, have to pay trash bill, and have to pay whatever. But that's what everything taken out, so that, that, that number, that's six-sixty-six-nine ninety-four, is gonna get bigger before the end of the year, and not smaller, because we'll still have revenues coming through. So if you, just Saturday, if we, if we were able to cut the string on Saturday, and, and wipe out, first, we can't just wipe out those funds, the auditor has to come in here with us and adjust those back to zero. But at the end of this fiscal year, there'll be an adjustment done, taking away those negative balances on those other, those three old accounts, and that will, that will pull us balance on the utility claim back to zero. Then that, that, so that six-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand will offset those previous, those previous deficiencies. So if we'd done that on Saturday, we would've knocked that gas net down to a hundred-and-eighty-three thousand dollars. Now, remember, we got down to a hundred-and-ten, but then we had to take the bond hand out, the portion of the bond hand out. So, no, yeah, it was a portion of the bond hand, so that pushed it back up, it was like a whole big chunk out. I'm assuming that a hundred-and-eighty-three, we're gonna, by the end of the year, we're gonna be very close, very close to completely wiping that out by the end of the year. So instead of starting this next fiscal year with a seven-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand dollar deficit in the gas fund, we're probably gonna start with a deficit less, it's gonna be less than a hundred thousand, could be down close to zero. Which basically means the first month and next fiscal year, we'll have that debt wiped out. Now, there's, there's a really positive side to that, there's one positive side to that that I wanna know right now, and that's the minute that we get that done, community gas levels are at forty thousand dollars. So, we're gonna get three months of revenue on gas, at least three months, maybe more, of revenue on gas in this next fiscal year, we're not gonna have to pay a bill, because they're, they're not gonna give us our money back, they're gonna give us credit, is what they're gonna do. So, we're gonna have that credit, so when our bill comes for that month, they're just gonna take it off the credit, but we'll be giving the revenues for that. So that's extra revenue coming in to kind of build that, that account back up a little bit, where it's not zero, right off of that. And the minute we get that down to zero, Jim Smith has already told us, call me, and we'll get it taken care of, and we're, and we'll move forward with getting that, that three-month prepayment taken care of. So, we're gonna work on this since last year's, last year's Tim Alco, when we started talking to Josie and I, and Xavier, said that one, Mr. Schmidt, and Derek News, gonna talk to him. So in less than a year, we've taken that deficit from seven-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand dollars down to hopefully zero by the end of fiscal year. So that's gonna be a really good thing. So we won't have that big, a huge three-quarter million dollar deficit over on the utility side anymore that's been sitting there for a while.
And Keith, the way you were able to do that was just by a portage, because we were making substantial gains in one utility fund and substantial losses in the other? Is that, and, and so that's, you could, reminding anybody, what, what's the catalyst to the gain?
Okay, so what, so what was happening was, we were paying a crew out of gas, and gas wasn't, and the gas department wasn't making enough money to pay, pay them. So that deficit just kept growing every year, because you had a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for salaries or whatever, but by the time you sold the gas and bought the gas, there was a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars left over, but you were still paying those employees out of there, and that deficit just continued to grow, continued to grow, continued to grow. Then on top of that, there was years, there were huge transfers made through the utility fund, the general fund, to cover what we were missing in taxes. And so that added to that deficit as well. And so that's why when we talked about this, during the budget last year, we talked about this, we need to do something with that annexation, we gotta get away from making those transfers, because it's killing us on the utility side. Because the reality is, when it came time to do these projects, that we, a lot of these projects that we've done, with water, sewer, gas, whatever, shouldn't have been borrowing to do that, the funds should have been paid for that. And if we hadn't been transferring seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars here and five-hundred thousand dollars there to cover deficits in the general fund, we would've been able to finance that, we wouldn't be paying interest on it. And so that's what we're trying to get back to on this utility side, is the utility side paying for itself. And it's not gonna be borrowing, when we have a broken sewer line, or we have a broken water line, or we might put a new U V system in the wastewater treatment plant, we'll have to go get a loan to do it, we got money in here. And there's a reserve, that, that'll be reserve fund, same as general fund, money at the fourth end of the year goes into that reserve fund. There'll be that reserve fund, and so when something comes up, it's like, okay, yeah, we got this project, it's gonna cost two-hundred thousand dollars, we got three-hundred thousand in the reserve fund, we'll bring you a budget amendment saying, here's a budget amendment, pull through two-hundred thousand out of, out of revenue, out of the, the reserve fund, unless paid for this project, you've got no interest, no nothing is done. And that, I mean, that's where we, that's, that's the whole, that's where we've been trying to drive this mode, and get to that point where we can do that. So, the reason I put that up there to start with is because I wanted to point out that despite all the other stuff, we made substantial gains on the utility side, substantial gains. This is the first year in ten or fifteen years that the deficit didn't go up on that side. And that was with us still making a three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar transfer to the general fund this year to cover stuff in the general fund.
From, from this thirty-five?
Well, out of the utility fund, I mean, yeah, well, out of the, yeah, we've been at fund thirty-five, it's a transfer we've made, yeah. There was, there was a three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar transfer that went to the general fund to help pay the bills in the general fund, because we didn't have that money there. So that's, that's one thing we're trying to get away from this year, no more transfers. One side takes care of itself, the other side takes care of itself. And then we pay for the things we need over here, out here. Now, by the time this lasts, the, the next regular meeting, we'll have the phase three of the gas line project, which you guys put out quite a while ago, we had the, we were talking about that a while ago, we had the first bid, the numbers were ridiculous, we told them all, we issued the bid again, we actually got a good bid this time. When that project's done, seventy percent of the gas lines in town are brand-new, so we should be doing repairs, because they're all brand-new polyline, that stuff's good for forever. That was part of the reason we talked about combining the utilities department last year, I said, why are we gonna pay a crew to just be gassed, when seventy percent of the gas lines are gonna be good? You know, they, and they weren't, they weren't just focused on that anyway, everybody was working on everything. So that's part of the reason we shifted all that around this last year, too. So I'll already point that out to start, before we started talking about the utility fund, about, about the draft that we're gonna put in front of you, to let you guys know that I, I'm pretty confident that if we don't have it done by September thirtieth, by October thirty-first, we're gonna be in the clear on that deficit that was there on our guys, and we're, we should never go back to that point again.
One question. Are the other utilities doing there also? Because now they're, they're, they're serving the gas?
Well, the gas utility's self-sufficient now, because it's not paying employees, you know, the utility fund is paying it. You know, so it's, the, the, the gas sales and gas revenues, they, they, they take care of each other. We're not losing money on gas. Of course, water, you know, water's always been the cash, and that's been the cash machine for the city for forever. Wastewater, always, you know, is always pretty self-sufficient, I think, the garbage, it makes a contractual thing, so it kinda, you know, you don't make a lot of money on garbage. We have a small markup on the garbage to cover the administrative part of collecting the, the money and paying them to clean that stuff. But it's a small markup that we have on garbage, and garbage was never set up to do anything but pay for itself. I mean, it was never set up to do anything else. But why can't we have a fun, poppy hole, we're doing, the, the revenues are about right where we projected they were gonna be? It's pretty easy to project those revenues as well, because, I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty constant, I have to say, number of houses, you know, you might see one or two houses that get all of the people living in them, you get one or two new houses here, whatever, I mean, the, the number of users, number of accounts stays very consistent. The one that you see diminishing accounts on those gas, because when people build homes, they don't put gas in to do anything like that. So that's the one that you're gonna continue to see the diminution, that's, that was why it's so important to do a utility fund and get rid of a gas company by itself, because that's the one that's gonna continue to diminish and go. Center of town, the older houses always have gas, because that's why they're set up. But any, any new growth, the new administration area, there's no gas in the new administration area, because they didn't have access to it, so they did everything alike. Anything that's built up, it's gonna be done alike, they don't, they're not, they're not want gas, they're gonna do it, it's easier. Okay, so, just wanted to make sure we pointed that out before we got into this. And now, we'll go to the actual draft that we put together for the utility fund budget. Okay, so, do you guys, do you guys want a physical copy of this to look at, too, or you have, you have it?
We have it, I think we have it.
Okay, everybody has it up there?
Yeah.
Okay, do they have the highlights?
First number, yeah.
Okay, so on page one, page one's the summary of the proposed budget, so the summary works, you can get. The important thing that I want to point out on here, you'll notice that there's some numbers that have some big changes, and we'll talk about those when we hit those individual pages. But what I want to point out is this number down here, our proposed budget for this fiscal year that we're in right now was 4.876 million, our proposed budget for this coming year is 4.876 million. So, it's actually $14 cheaper, $14.656 cheaper than it was last year. Now, keep it, it's very close to the same, but we don't have the transfers, so there's $350,000 there that's been, but we've done some things to move some burden off of the general fund onto the utility fund. And we'll kind of talk about those things as we go over here. And so you'll see the, the, the last little number, it's $894 in deposit, all the ones in itself, so it is a balanced budget. On page two, which is our revenues, last year's projected revenues were about 4.84 million. Our projected revenues for this year are about 4.854, so very similar. Just looking at, so basically what we did, we look at water sales for 10 months. We take that number, divide it by 10, multiply times 12. And so, okay, that's what we think we're gonna get next year. We're gonna get gas sales for 10 months, divide by 10, multiply by 12, that's what we think we're gonna get for this next year. We're gonna get sewer, sewer sales for 10 months, divide by 10, 10, multiply by 12. So this was not that hard to, not that hard to project the revenues, and we normally pin those revenues very closely. On page three, which is, okay, so this is where we start to get into the individual parts of the budgets. Page three is the utility fund, the finance department, a portion of this. So this is the administration part of it. It's all, there's, everything is very similar as you go down through here to what it was this last year. I do want to point out.
Page four up there.
Page four, that's page three, no, that is there, that's page three, okay. Oh yeah, so the administration portion of it, there are a couple of changes on this that have been, everything is very similar to what it was before. What we do want to point out, a couple of changes. One, you'll see that the unemployment insurance is added in here, it wasn't in the administration part before. We did this on the general fund side last year, we didn't do it on the utility. On the general fund side, we put unemployment insurance in one place because the wet departments had $240 for unemployment insurance, and departments had, you know, $350. Some departments had $1,500, and it's like, okay, you can't pay a bill that way because you would get an unemployment claim and you would have to take it out of four different accounts because you didn't have the money in one lineup. So you put all those things in one lineup, and that way you don't have to run around and do 14 different lineups to pay that. So we would all get unemployment insurance in the administration portion of that, yes.
Talking about insurance, have you gotten the renewal for our health insurance?
No, not seriously, no. It's, we're supposed to get it any day.
Yeah.
It's kind of like the same thing with the prison district, they all come in about the same time, and we just kind of sit there waiting.
I know we did the $350,000 transfer, but when was that done?
It was done, well, I don't know when it was done, it was done very, of course, look this way or whatever, we have a budget to make.
For tax discount?
No, because we didn't have the money in the fund to make the transfer for a tax discount. Which I remember, we had that $750,000 deficit in gas. The utility fund was started October 1st. So it took a little while to build a little bit of money in there to be able to do the transfer because the money that was coming into the utility fund was having to be used to pay, our gas bill was having to be used to pay our sanitation bill. So we started that fund, October 1st was the equal balance. That's why we had enough money in there before we could actually transfer it.
So that's the other?
We should, well, now remember, at the end of this year, that $666,000 balance, or whatever that balance is, that means they're gonna have to go pay off that deficit. So at the start of this next fiscal year, it could be zero. There's a very strong possibility, but we're not recommending a transfer at this point, so it wouldn't matter.
We're gonna gain, we're gonna gain in the period.
Yeah, yeah, we have, yeah, because the first three months we do that, every payment we receive for gas is just gonna shade that funding because we're not gonna have it.
Well, if you calculate, you know, what, uh, probably $300,000 a month?
Almost right, it's $5 million, it's almost $5 million a year revenue.
Well, I mean, in that?
On utilities, so you divide that by 12, I mean, that's pretty chunky every month, that's.
Well, if you, if you, you know, that's six, I'm thinking about that $600,000 on your current revenue, if you add the $350 back to it, then in two months, so here.
Well, we still gotta pay gas bill, we still gotta pay our sanitation bill, and we still gotta pay payroll, and we still gotta pay those other things too. So, we take in $400,000 a month, but then there's a cost in there that's a fixed cost, not a fixed cost, but it's a cost we have to pay, which is all those other things, it's utilities and salary, and we gotta pay the bills to ACI, and we gotta pay the bill for the gas, and we gotta pay those things. So, take in $450,000, we may have $200 and something thousand of that that we have to pay out, or somewhere around there. But yeah, it's gonna continue to grow.
And that's my point, it could be $100,000 a month.
It could, it could, especially right now because the gas bills are pretty low right now.
I have one question, when does the contract come up for ACI?
It was done in 2015.
2015.
So 20, 2015 years, so two more years, please.
Two more years.
Okay, so two things there, we plugged all of the unemployment insurance in one place, and we, there's no, at this point, there's no transfer.
And what was the liability insurance, what?
That's unemployment insurance.
Uh, liability with your TMO?
Oh.
And was it paid somewhere else before?
Yeah, it's built in someplace else.
So is this unemployment insurance for all employees or just the employee?
That's terminated with Pauls?
Just utility, yes sir. Yeah, we have a line item in the general fund too.
Okay.
Okay, so the next page is the finance department expenditures under the utility fund. One difference, there's only one significant difference on that page, and that's this number down here, the contractual services. So we have Tyler Technologies Inc. code, which is what we use to collect our bills, to generate the bills we send out, all that stuff, we have a contract with them that we have to pay. That's another one of those things that's been scattered all over the place, and each, you know, each department, those pieces taken out here and there. And so we moved that into the finance department because that's a function of the finance department. So we moved that into their budget in the utility department. We moved half of that cost into their budget in the utility department. So again, it's not being pulled out of four, five, or six percent of different places, it's being pulled out of two places. Yeah, so it just, this is not a new thing, it's something we moved from someplace else. The next page, there's something, page 67. So we'll go to page six. So on page six, the changes on there that are noted. So, our utility billing clerks, we have historically paid part of that out of the utility fund and part of that out of the general fund. And so what we've done in this draft budget is move all of those people to the utility fund to take some of that burden off of the general fund so we can try to open up some other money to do some other things in the general fund, like street tour or else we decide we wanna do it out of the general fund. So, there is a utility, that's salaries for wages and skill, line two. There was a zero there last year because that was paid for out of the general fund, and we added that person into the utility budget this time. So that's our utility billing clerk that's up here at the front. So because of that, and obviously the numbers for life insurance and everything else don't, so that's why those numbers look significantly, look different. Down under services, the postage for sending out the utility bills is also being paid out of the general fund. So we're moving that over to the utility fund for that to be paid there. The other services, that's the other half of the Tyler Inc. contract, so we moved that over there. And then the last line item in the line 325, the credit card fees. That credit card fees is significantly higher, budgeted to be significantly higher next year than it was this year because we added the credit card billing to the website. So we're recovering that fee, but we don't pay it, we don't have money in the line item to pay it. So the rep, we're recovering the fee, this is not costing us, it's coming in as part of the payment on the bill. But we have to have enough money in the line item to tax the payment. So it's not, it's a bigger number, but it's being covered.
With those credit card payments, doesn't that save on later?
Sure does, we, surprisingly, we haven't had as many people go to it as I thought.
Change.
They're complaining about that $1.25 charge.
People are not computer savvy.
Charge, it's a little bit of charge, I mean, I've heard a number of people talk about that little bit of charges, but we gotta pay that charge still, I mean, so it got added to their bill if they wanna do that. I think the longer that sits there, I mean, really, $1.25, if you're gonna come sit in line over here for 10 minutes and drive over here in the heat, now we're on $1.25? Yeah, at some point they're gonna realize that I'm paying a thing at midnight if I wanna pay it at midnight if I just pay the fee. And I think, well, we'll just continue to see more and more people sign up for it. Till it gets to a point, at some point, where more people are paying online than the less people are paying online. Boy, they kind of revolted for that little fee, real quick.
I actually tried to do it online, but it asked me for my bill from last month, and I put it, and it still didn't generate.
It asks for the amount that you pay as well as your account number.
Yeah, I couldn't do anything.
We have to do dashes. We've had people call in and we'll sit there and walk through it.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
And actually, the girls up front, if you come to the front desk, they'll give you a slip. If you tell them you wanna set up online, they'll give you a slip and give you those two numbers you need to put in, and hand it to you so you can.
Oh, great, great.
Yeah, so we're trying to make it as easy as we can for people to get signed up, sign up to use it.
A question, so the $8,000 in supplies there is out from $500, is that extra supplies needed for?
That's, the supplies are being used by the, by the utility clerks up here, or further, actually being paid for on the general fund. So it's paper envelopes.
Oh, it's coming from general fund backing too?
Yeah, so instead of, you pay that general fund, this time it's being paid out, and here it's being put in the utility fund. Next page, page seven. Oh, so that $19,600 that was in the current budget, that's not in this one, that was one of the Tyler, one of the payments for Tyler. That was one of the places where it had been stuck in there, so we don't need that anymore because we put the two, the two line items that were being paid out of, so we didn't have to deal with that anymore. But everything else under the wastewater treatment is pretty close to the same numbers as it was last year. Now, except for page two, which would be page eight of your document there, that's the last page of the wastewater treatment budget. There are a couple of changes on that. Facility improvements, we've not had any money in that line item for the wastewater treatment plants. It's like a, for them to fix a door, fix a window, fix a fence, I mean, there's been no money in there for them to do anything. So we put at least a small amount in there this year, so if they need to fix something, or they need to, you know, do something, buy an air conditioner for office something, there's a little bit of money in there to do that. Then we also had to add in the $50,000 match CDVG grant. And because that's a wastewater project, we put it in the wastewater, in the wastewater budget. And because it is a wastewater project, that money can't come out of the utility fund. Where last time, the last one, 2016, we paid out a bond. 2014, I think, was paid out of the general fund. That was before I was here, 2016, we wouldn't have paid it out of bond because we didn't, the time we had to pay it was right after we were trying to cut down our levels, so it's been, we didn't have any money to do it. So if you guys don't want to take it out of bond, that's okay. But so for now, it's $50,000 in wastewater to match the grant because we'll have to have it available in the budget next year so we can move forward with that grant. Any questions on that? Okay, page nine, this is water production and collection. There is a salary there on the top that was added in, which is salaries for wage, salaries, salaries for supervisors. Last year's budget had Rudy's salary stuck in, and it was all gas, but he's not just gas. He's gas in his water and his wastewater. So what we did here was, we put a portion of it into each one, instead of pointing it all out of that gas line item. So we scattered, we put it in appropriately where it should be coming from, rather than just having it taken out of the department that he was only, and one budget was paid for all of him instead of three budgets being paid for him. So that's what the addition is there. And then down on the bottom, on the water plants, we increased that budget from 120, basically 125,000 to 150,000. And the reason we did that at the start of this fiscal year, we had two of our pumps on our wells that were out. And it cost us almost $100,000 to fix those two pumps. So, right off the map, that whole line item basically got eaten up. Historically, what that line item had been used for was each year, one of the wells was reworked. Each year they basically, basically pulled the pump, reworked everything, checked everything, put it back in, got it back where it was, almost where it's been. The chance of two of the four of them going out, like they did, it shouldn't happen. But it does, plenty of things like that happen. So, one, we wanted to make sure there was sufficient money in there where something else had it. Two of them have been reworked the year before, and another one was reworked. So three of the, three of the four have been redone in the last two years, which means there's really only one more that needs to be done. So we should have sufficient money in there to do that. We also, last year, out of the bond, you guys remember, we paid for the cleaning of the tanks.
Mm-hmm.
We didn't get them all done because we didn't have the money to get them all done. By TCQ standards, those tanks are supposed to be cleaned every two years. And based on what we've identified, it's seven or eight years since they've been cleaned. So we did everything we could, there was one tank left, and they were having problems, I was getting sick because of the heat because I came here in August, and so it was 140 degrees, I mean, the tanks are hot, and the hot water going in the tanks. So they were having to change diapers out every hour, they had, I was getting sick. They fit us into a window, I don't know if you guys remember this, but when we came and asked for the approval to do it out of the bond, they actually had a window that it opened up, and they called us and said, because we've been talking to them about trying to figure out how to do it. And they actually had a window open and said, if you can get an approval tonight, we'll be there in two days. And we've got five days, because somebody else canceled. So we got here, and they were able to get through all of them except for one tank. So we have got to get on some kind of a rotation per TCQ standards to get those done every year. So that additional part also is to cover, making sure we get those tanks cleaned and making sure we keep along the maintenance schedule they're supposed to be on. Because you get all that, all that material out of the tanks, keeps it from getting in the lines, it keeps, I mean, from a maintenance standpoint, it's a huge impact if we do that, if we maintain those things right. It's just like flushing out your hot water heater at your house. If you flush it out when you're supposed to, hot water heater's been the last long time. If you don't flush it out for a year, you're probably gonna have to buy a new hot water heater. But it's the same thing with our storage tanks. So we gotta make sure we get those on schedule, get them flushed out. We did, we did all the tanks that we did for 20, for that delta. And it did enough costs, it's more because some of those tanks were, the assumption was there would be two or three inches of sediment in them. There was 18 to 24 inches because they'd severed them some. So, doing it on the right rotation should be cheaper, but we just, $30,000, we know that cost too this time, that should be able to get through the next time, so that's why we increased the $30,000.
Under services, postage expenses went from 14,000 to 500. Did that?
That went to the, remember, it went to the $15,000 of it?
On the other side?
For the administration?
So that was not a general fund?
No, that wasn't a general fund, it was out of there. So again, you got, you got gas, water, and sewer all going out on one bill, but sewer was paid for when it should have been on the administration side. On page 10. So we added in a line item on capital. You can see that on the right, we have had no capital purchases outside of bond expenditures in recent history in town. We're going to get to a point where we're at a problem if we don't start doing capital purchases. That mean equipment, that mean vehicles. The vehicles we have, we've robbed, we've got every vehicle we can get out of the impound yard. We've got Adelation running around out there with city stickers on it, we have a little rig card running around with city stickers on it. We've got, we have BMW running around with city sticker for a while. I mean, anything we could get out of that yard, we've taken out of the yard, we've used it to play ball market. But we can't pull, can't pull a potable machine to dig out the utility lines with a BMW. I mean, so at some point, we're gonna have to replace some of these trucks, they're getting really old. And also, it was the same with the equipment, I mean, we've got, you know, we've bought, we've bought some equipment, we bought backhoes, and we bought some trash pumps, and we bought some things. But there's other equipment that we need out there that we don't have too. The thought was, if we can make this budget work and put $50,000 in that budget, in the budget to buy equipment this year, we could actually do two things. One, that every year, that $50,000 will become part of the budget, and it works and they can supply the things we need. But in those off-years where we don't have the CDVG grant, that $50,000 will be rolled over to equipment that year. So they'll have $50,000 one year, $100,000 the next year, $50,000 the next year, $100,000 the next year. And actually be able to get some of the, you know, another potable machine's almost $70,000. Our potable machine runs all the time, I think it runs all the time, we run two of them, very used. You know, stuff like that, that kind of stuff, we could actually, you know, maybe in one of those years, if we did need to buy something else, we had $100,000, might be a couple of hiccups, you know, whatever, and start to rotate some of that, some of that capital, those capital lines that we have out there before we're walking around dragging home vines, walking down the street. So that was the reason we put that in.
They wouldn't be able to finance some of this stuff, some like?
Well, so that's another thing, I talked to Rudy about this when we did this, you know, if we put $50,000 in there per year and they know they're gonna get that, you know, each year, well, then maybe, maybe we'll buy four trucks. Maybe that's the need right now, is four new vehicles, and if we can finance it with that payment, it's not, you know, not more than $50,000. Well, then fine, you know you're gonna have that for four years, so we'll do that. But then in that off-year, when you get the other 50 from the CDVG grant, then if you need to go buy a new potable machine or something, we'll do that then. So that's kind of what the block process was to do then.
One quick question, the cap pushes to the vehicle side, we're talking about financing, and both of the options, leasing as well, where we're developing stuff with old vehicles?
So, so what we did at the PD, and we've done it twice at the PD, that was, we did lease down. And we did, we finished up one lease this last year, and we're gonna enter second lease. So we bought five that were leased down, the last year we paid a dollar, each one to get the titles. And then we went right into a new lease on five more. So we basically have, you know, ten vehicles that are in pretty good shape. Those five that we recently had, there was a four-year lease on them. At the end of that lease, they all had about $50,000 or $60,000 left. So they still got quite a bit of useful life, and then they got four more. And so that was kind of the thought process on that, was you just keep rolling that over, and you've got a fleet of vehicles that's in good shape, we don't have to worry about. Because the other thing is, you know, especially if it's old, it's the cost of the repair. You know, every time something happens, I mean, it's, you know, if a transmission goes out, or someone goes, you know, these heavy duty, the heavy-duty trucks especially, that we have to have to pull the equipment. Can't just park, I mean, they have to get it pulled, so we end up having to get that stuff repaired. And a transmission, one of those things isn't cheap, or a new engine, one of those things isn't cheap, and all the repair costs. Started adding up to a point where this is like, just like only a car for 15 years. At some point, it's cheaper to make a payment on a new car than it is to keep putting money into that old car. So that's kind of, kind of what we were looking at. So we have, we have done a lease with the PD, and it worked out really well. Worked out good enough that we did it again. So that's definitely something we can look out on, on that as well.
Good question, are any of the city vehicles allowed to be taken home?
Depending on the employees, on who it is and what they're doing over the weekend, I do allow employees to take some home. Especially our partner, because he works every Saturday at 10:00, open a park, or whatever, because he's been out there by himself, with nobody else to help supervise. Rudy takes a vehicle home, he needs to, because he gets called out all hours. It's cost-effective for us because if he gets called out, he goes straight to where he, where he should be, and he doesn't have to come in, switch vehicles, go wherever it's at. Our on-call person takes his home vehicle home, our utility on-call person, because when they get called, we don't want, you know, if they can go straight from their house and go fix it, and they come back, maybe it's an hour's worth of time to where they have to go get a vehicle, load tools, go fix it, go back and load tools, start the vehicle, maybe it turns into two hours worth of time, so it saves a lot of overtime. The number of take-home vehicles since I got here, way down.
Way up?
Way down.
Way up?
Way down.
About how, how many?
Minus the police officers, the police officers take theirs, minus the police officers, I think we have three right now that are actually taking them. When I got here, we had 10, 11, 12 officers, a bunch. And I wrote policy in 2016, I think, just on, they had to provide justification. Because the other thing is, if you have a take-home vehicle, they have to pay taxes on it. And that wasn't being recorded in, and so that's, that's not good. So that's why we stopped it then, they're gonna give justification, why? They were, they were, now, take-home vehicles, the police officers, they don't have to pay taxes on them. That's, that's a different, the tax law on, on law for vehicles.
But it's not having due?
Yeah, it's not having due justification on what they're taking home.
Question about the, the on-call, they still have to pay taxes on that?
No, no, because they're working, I mean, they're on-call, that's, that's not, that's a different function. Okay, second thing on there, transfers out. As you remember, we had to do that USDA reserve fund to make the, to get the reserve fund caught up on the 2012 loan. You guys authorized the first transfer into that this year, we created that fund. We had 10 years to put away a certain amount of money. When we were five years into it, we put away nothing. Another one of those surprises that came up in the middle of everything. You guys authorized 13. Um, you guys authorized thirteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-four cents this year. Fund was set up, they were, that, that, they approved the agreement, so that's the funding for next year, that'll have to be in there for the next, this one and three more after that, and then we pop.
That's the ninety-eight?
That is the eighteen, that's this one right here. The bottom highlighted one, the thirteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-four, sixty-four. Yeah, that's what that is.
What's that in nineteen ninety-eight? For the new bond?
Under debt services.
The debt service.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's all we have to pay on. We're still paying on nineteen ninety-eight bond, dude.
Okay, not just twenty-twelve?
No, nineteen ninety-eight, twenty-twelve, twenty-twelve bond, twenty-twelve loan, twenty-sixteen bond, and lots of bills. So I want some, we'll give away, no problem.
I'll take that.
That nineteen ninety-eight though, we've got. But there's only one, there's only one or two more payments left on it. Oh, so, oh, we paid off one last year too. And we got off twenty sixteen last year too.
So right there, there's eight thousand from next year, but there's, hasn't been any payment for previous years, so.
Okay, so tell me that again.
Uh, because the utility fund, this thirty-five was just created, so we have no history. You would have to look into fund zero-two, zero-three, zero-four to see the history.
This is a line item that was never in the budget until this year. Uh, we did a, we did a budget amendment to transfer from the general fund into that fund this year to meet requirements under, under the agreement that we signed with the U S D A.
So that money was somewhere else, it's just coming back?
No, that money, that, that thirteen-three-sixty-four, sixty-four will get paid out into that reserve fund. It won't get paid out, it'll get transferred out of utilities into that reserve fund.
No, he was referred to the eight thousand above it, about two, two, two entries before.
Nineteen ninety-eight?
That was previously, you see the fund thirty-five at the top, if you look in fund zero-two-five, two-oh-two-six-five-one, that's where we were reporting it. The previous fiscal years. But now thirty-five is a new fund, so there's no history for fifteen, sixteen, sixteen-seventeen.
Why are you proposing eight thousand then?
Because that's what the payment is.
That's what it is.
So on that, on that nineteen ninety-eight bond, there's two payments, and every one of our bonds, there's two payments. Uh, we don't make a single payment on any of them. You pay a principal payment, and you pay an interest payment.
Yeah, you pick the bottom one, it has a total payment of nineteen-three forty, because that's the interest and the principal. We have to, um, identify them separate. So that's why the eight thousand is now broken out of the nineteen thousand.
Does that make sense? So six fifty-two, it was budgeted in nineteen-three forty this year. Six fifty-two next year, it's the ten thousand and the eight thousand, because this splits out the two.
All you did was split it out.
Yeah.
Split it out. Okay, the next page is garbage. Yeah, sorry, same page?
Same page, yes. The, the meter replacement, uh, on our technical projects. Is it, is that a lease contract? Or are those meters?
That's that twenty-twelve mess.
So it's a lease?
Yeah.
What's gonna happen when the lease runs out?
Oh, that lease ever runs out.
Yeah, you have a lot.
Yeah, that's not always ago. That thing, don't even get me started on that. Only two point four million dollars just vanished when we got mess, and, and we still pay on it every year. And all we get is a little report that doesn't really tell us anything for that payment.
So do they provide, uh, new meters and old meters break?
No, we have to find new meters and old meters.
What are we leasing?
We're leasing their, I think the lease portion out is on their, um, their software that goes with them, with the, with the, with their software up there. What's it called, it's, uh, proprietary software that goes with them. Like that's what we're paying for. And the football. Yeah, well, that, that, don't even, that thing was.
Who's that, Johnson Control, or what is it?
Johnson?
Yeah, we did, try to get them to help us with like.
It's a word, because leasing software.
It's a chunk, it's a, it's a big chunk every year.
What was that done, twenty twelve?
Twenty twelve.
We can't get out of it?
Oh, I got that contract, wrote that twice.
That's a smart meter.
Yeah, they step real smart. Okay, on the utility budget, or the garbage department budget, um, we, last year, is one of the things we did in the reorganization of everything, was there was an employee that was funded out of that department. Um, and so we did away with that position, that was one of the positions we did away with. Um, but we have a utility person, I say utility, um, floater, who's covering that area and amongst doing other things. So we put a portion of his salary back into garbage, because he is spending part of his time in garbage. Um, so to try to make sure that everything is where it should be and everything's a clear reflection, a reflection of what it should be, part of that salary that's put back in there, so that's why they changed all that salary there. Um, and then the last two pages are the gas budget. Uh, and there was no substantial, substantial changes made in the gas budget, no like we talked about on, on gas. Um, it's, you know, it's, it kind of is what it is, and you can't really do a whole lot extra with it. Um, so we didn't really make any changes to it. Um, one other thing that I wanna make sure, I went on this, I'm gonna go back to the, back to the first page here real quick. Back to that summary sheet at the very start. Some of that stuff will make more sense now. Okay, so administration, you see that the budget on administration drops significantly? Well, obviously, part of that was because we're not managing the transfer, because that's what the transfer was happening for. Um, the, the, again, the two budgets are within fourteen dollars of each other. Um, but we took that three hundred and fifty thousand dollar transfer out, so there was obviously stuff out on the other side. You saw what some of that stuff is, it was the C D B G grant match, it was the equipment line item, you know, there was a bunch of things that we added in there. Um, so there's a hundred thousand dollars right off the map that got added in with those two things. But one of the other things that added to that was, in this, in this utility budget, uh, for the utility department, the salary numbers were done based on the recommendation that the council gave us, an eighty percent of the salary survey for supervisors, and ninety percent for, um, for our employees. So that was built into this budget and it's balanced. Uh, so we're halfway there, uh, being able to get to those two numbers on the salaries.
For utilities?
For utilities, yeah, we've done it, for utilities, it works and it balances. Um, that was part of the, that's another part of the reason we tried to transfer, um, some of that, some of that, um, liability off of the general fund into utilities, because we knew by not doing the transfer, um, that was gonna make it harder on the general fund. Um, so we put everything over on that side that we could to reach the lead, so that's, we, we took away three hundred, you know, we're gonna have to take away a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar transfer to the general fund, but we added three hundred and fifty thousand dollars on this other side, that would probably be liabilities off the general fund anyway, including salaries, um, including, um, the C D B G grant match, some of that stuff, we put some of that liability on there, so kind of washed it out. And it should help us to, you know, somewhere between two hundred and fifty and three hundred thousand dollars on the general funds, general funds side, we get it, we get it. Excellent. Over and out.
Question. Uh, what, what is the D E N program? E D and E, it's on, uh, page twelve.
The D E N program?
For the river commission, it is, we need that program.
What is it?
What are they here?
For a D E N, it's reporting, to report to the river commission of all our sites, of the, of the gas. They need to be reported every year. That's a rule.
Is that like the, uh, P D?
Well, then, that's a consultant. We have a consultant that comes in and puts that together, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's the cost for the consultant to come in and put it together, because you have to be certified to do it. And we're required by the river commission to, to do it.
River commission, it's, it's, at all.
Yeah.
So we don't have anybody certified?
There's not very many people in ours who are certified. That's kind of one of those things that got added in, that was added in to make sure somebody's frank, or making some money doing something. So almost every city that has a gas department, they have a consultant that comes in and does it.
Have to stay calm on the river. The other question I had was, uh, I don't know if we, uh, I see, I see overtime at every department here for last year and for this year. Uh, did we have overtime?
Uh, we, we're doing everything we can to not, um, have it, but, you know, if you have gas, and you have a water leak, you know, an A-line breaks at five-thirty, I can't let it go until the next day.
So the last budget?
But it wasn't used?
That's what we, we try not to, we've done our best to try not to use it, but next time, you can't avoid it.
But it was in the budget.
What? Yeah, there was, there was a lot, there was a, there was a lot we paid out all the time when I started working here. And I was the one thinking I tried to come back, but it's good. Um, gotta be careful what people write on pictures.
When are we gonna see the parks to know that?
That'll be next Tuesday. Now, everything, everything else, um, administration, P D, parks, streets, that's all I see.
Okay.
Keep Josie waiting, okay?
Go ahead, I got a question. Following to the D E N program, what's the requirement certification, is it worth looking at for one R M?
We can't, I mean, sure we can't, um, you know, it's one more of those things, you know, I mean, I'd love to have somebody certified, like, to do everything, right? But, you know, we've got sixty, you know, sixty, six, sixty-seven employees, everything, you know, I'm breaking away from the time to go do it all that down. Well, this is, this is all part of what, this is all part of where I want to go with, um, the start with the employee compensation plan. We've talked about the stipends, we've talked about those things, about getting to a point where we make it, um, you know, we make it worthwhile for our employees to go do that stuff. Um, rather than, it'd be great to get somebody of five thousand dollars type here, rather than, than paying a consultant twelve thousand to come and do that.
It's like, we have a consultant also for the, for the sewer, don't we, I mean, for the wastewater?
We have a consultant wastewater, because you have to have a certain level of certification. We don't have anybody that has all, we have a consultant for gas, because you have to meet those certain requirements, or anybody that meets ours. And most of those people, you know, most of these times, most of those people, it's, you know, there's somebody that did it for twenty-five years, you know, someplace else, and they took it. Not long to get to that point where they got those certifications, and then they turn around, retire, and hire all those consultants, it's like bankers do this, it's like, you know, everybody else does it. After you've got that much experience, then you work yourself.
Keep that, just, did you, this is, it's, it's, it's at this point, it's a budget, budget. One of the things that I'd like to look at, kind of throw this out, and, and, and there's a thing that you said, we need to be careful about, you know, because we need to build it reserved. That we, we don't need to be, uh, you know, we gain from one area, you know, we need to cut substantially. But one of the things I would like to have a conversation about is to look at the overall budget, is the water surcharge. I feel like quarter million dollars, so you have the revenue side, um, it's, it's big, but if we were to do away with that, where could we capture funds to, to make up those there, uh? In other words, if we were to give that back, or, or, or it's just, and all that, um, where could we make up quarter million dollars to go into this side of the budget?
Oh. Oh, you ask hard questions, I know.
Yeah, it's just, it's just something, because I know we need to, you know, we're all, and, and, because certainly, that brings this, no other, and then we actually, we, 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 we.
You know, we've, we've kind of looked, we've, we've looked at a few things based on questions that you guys have asked. Um, you know, one of the, one of the, the, one of the ideas or concepts that I really liked on the surcharge is something I think that we're not on at one time, and that is about a graduated surcharge. You know, if you're a commercial user, you pay more, if you're, you know, a thirty-year-old lady only using your basic minimum every month, you pay less. And, I mean, I, I would almost prefer to see us try to figure out how to do that versus reboot it. One, I don't know if we can, because we pledged revenues.
Right.
When we did the bond, and we pledged, and those revenues are gonna come from surcharges on this, so I don't know what that, how that would affect the bond, we'd have to check that. Um, but we did, we pledged an amount of revenues that would be done by surcharges, we didn't pledge how they would be done. Um, so is there a way to restructure the surcharges where it has, you know, less effect on those than, than, than it really impacts, and it has more of an effect on those than it really does an impact? Um, I mean, I think, I think that's, that, that may be our best bet, is to look at trying to go that way and see if we can come up with something there. Um, we could go back and look at the bond language, talk to Bobby, have him review it, see what he thinks, talk to the bond council, because we hired bond council for that, and ask him what he thinks. Um, see if they have some other options too, and bond council may be able to come up with some other options for us, along with that same goal too.
Well, I'd just like to kick that around a little bit, you know, prior to set the final budget, and to see, to see what we can do. Raise fees, raise taxes, and so if we, if we can, I'd like, I'd like to get an opportunity.
I will say this. We are going to set the general fund budget based on the existing tax rate. There will not be, no matter what we have to do to figure out, there will not be a reform of taxes. I don't know, I would assume, I mean, I would assume that our effective rate's gonna be identical to our rate from last year, because the estimate we got, or the final valuation we got, it was in like a hundred dollars, what the final valuation was last year. So the estimator, our, our, the only thing that could change our effective tax rate would be the fact that we collected more in sales taxes, which we don't collect a year before. And that has an impact on it, because part of our sales tax has to go to offset, um, has to go to offset property tax. So our effective rate may actually end up being, you know, point one cent lower than it was last year, we'll have to see what we can calculate. But there's no way we're gonna look at, at any kind of a, well, maybe, we're gonna figure out how to make that budget work, um, at where it's at. Um, now, there's a couple of things that go with that, one, with the, with the first annexation done, and the second annexation's still pending. Now, your tax rate is spread over more people. So you guys remember last year, we talked about that tax rate, you have two portions of that tax rate, you have an M and O rate, which is your maintenance operations, you have an I N S rate, which is your debt service. Our debt service hasn't changed, but now that debt service is scattered over more people. Um, so that rate's gonna come down, which means that the M and O rate, the same tax rate, the M and O would actually go up a little bit, because the I N S is gonna come down, because it's scattered over more people. So there is a very good, there's a very strong chance that when we finish those calculations, that the, at the exact same tax rate, that we actually have a larger M and O portion, uh, former than what we had last year. Uh, there's a very good chance, I mean, it's, it's gotta work out that way, there's no way it can't, because I N S rate has to go down, because there's more properties starting to spread out. Um, so we've talked about that, right, so there's no way we're even looking, maybe even looking, trying to maybe buy it out of, you know, a paying decrease. So we'll see, you know, we'll, we'll give you guys some numbers and say, okay, you know, here's the exact same tax rate, here's what it is. Uh, you can do a half-cent decrease, here's what you would be, you know, whatever, and look at some of that stuff. And maybe the reality is, maybe that, maybe a half-cent decrease is something that impacts those people more than taking three dollars off their water bill every month. I mean, that, that's something that I think we really need to look at. And so, you know, this, I mean, this is just, we, I told Josie, we would, let's, let's balance this thing, this part of it, because the real part's next week. I mean, that's the real part, the general fund part is always the real part, this is the easy part. Um, and so we need to get into that part, because that's the part that affects everybody's, everybody's budget, that's the part that they're paying for. They're paying for this, and their utility fees. All this is being paid for when they pay their gas and water bill. Um, that's the part of there that really affects everybody. And I, and I think, I, you know, I think when we get a chance to get through those, now that we've got the top five numbers, and we get a chance to get through some of that stuff, I think we're gonna see an opportunity over there to maybe do some things that would have a bigger impact than, than looking at the surcharges. Especially if we would have to go back and do something with that bond. Uh, one, I don't know, I don't know if we could do something with the bond, if we pledged those fees until the call date, I don't know if we could do anything, and a call date's ten years away. Uh, so we may be stuck with that, I don't know. Uh, but, I mean, we can look at that, but I really think we have maybe a better chance to impact people on the other side, because that's where the impact's at.
Well, well done, DJ.
Great.
I have a question. Well, uh, Ben asked the questions that I had on surcharge. Uh, but for some reason, there is, there is, um, a feeling out in the community that the surcharge, um, those surcharges were a long-time issue. And I don't know how that moved out, if we ever, uh?
Well, they're a long-time issue until the bond's paid off, and when the bond's paid off, they go away. That's the way they were put in. That order says that they are to pay that portion of that bond, when that bond's over, they're gone, but the portion that's twenty.
They're tied to the bond.
They're tied to the bond, yeah. That's like a twenty, it's twenty-some years from now, but yeah, they, they, they have an expiration.
So, so this is a two hundred and forty thousand on surcharges, uh, what makes up the, the difference?
You have surcharges on gas and on, on water and wastewater, you have a surcharge on garbage. So there's two of them, so there's two different places in here that have surcharges.
Yeah, the garbage is one fifteen, and, uh, water is two twenty-five. That's selling, right? That's three forty?
Um, water sales surcharge is two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
I don't know, I was doing that. Are, are both of those garbage and water, are both pledged to?
So, well, if you remember, if you remember when the bond, when the bond was done, it was a geobond. was a jail box, a part of it had to come from, from the utilities, that's the only way that that can, that can be, so it was decided to go fifty-fifty. And fifty percent will be paid out of tax, out of property tax revenues, they're like, it would be paid from utilities. But we had to show them how we're gonna make sure that revenue was gonna come in, so what we did was we said, okay, we have twenty-eight hundred water accounts, and we have nine hundred, whatever, you know, whatever, we give the total number of accounts, and said, okay, to come up with that level of revenue we need, how much do we have to charge each one to get to it? That's what makes the graduated scale kind of hard, because we may have twenty-eight hundred accounts, and so we could say, okay, we're gonna split it up this way, but maybe there's only, you know, a hundred commercial accounts, but there's twenty-seven hundred of the other. So, doing the graduate scale may not have the kind of impact that you think. So, across the board, flat amount, if you, this many accounts, this much per month, this is our revenue we're gonna get, to put it straight in the budget, okay, you guys' revenue pay off. That's not, that's the way surcharges are normally done, too, so I mean, it wasn't that normal to do it that way, it's based on accounts.
But in my thoughts, I think we do a percentage of the monthly bill.
Well, that's something we can do, because we can look at total, total water revenue for the year, and say, okay, to get to this amount, you have to have a surcharge percentage of X. And that surcharge is this, and then whatever your amount is, times X, that's your surcharge. And that, that, that'll work. That's one of the things we've talked about, is doing it as a percentage of the water bill, and not based on whether you're a commercial, because if you're, if you're private, I mean, if Ben's watering his yard twenty-four hours a day, and his water bill's four dollars a month, he shouldn't be paying a big, a big shit, because he's using that system more than everybody else's. That's all, and he might be using it more than some of the commercial businesses in the town are using it, because maybe, you know, a lot of these commercial businesses, their water use, and their commercial business is for water. That's it, that's all the water used to happen to do.
Or gas and car wash.
Or gas and car wash. So, yeah, I mean, there's, 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 there's ways to look at redistributing those costs, but still making sure that we hit that budget.
I think I'm gonna look at an algebraic function.